Yeah. All right, everyone, it's 3:05. If anybody would like to speak, just a reminder, you got to sign up and give your paper to Laura. Okay. Are we recording?
Yes, we are good to go.
All right, so the first item will be called Water. And in attendance, we have all board members.
Wait to fast track. Good job.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We should have a running clock.
Oh, gosh. All right, so we'll call back to, we have all supervisors in attendance, and we need a motion for approval of the final agenda.
Before you approve, before you approve, can, we did get a request from the Stony Brook HOA to remove item number 13A. So if you could remove that item.
Delay it.
Yes, until the HOA comes back with a further request.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move Agenda Item 11A up to in between public comment and Agenda Item 6, the local achievements and recognition. I believe a number, a good amount of the audience here is here to make public comment, and I believe it's probably on the majority of them on this topic, and I think it's only fair to them that any motions or whatever be made while they're here, and they don't have to sit through the rest of the agenda.
Okay, I just have one question regarding staff. When we have, I'm assuming they're all speaking on the same item? Are we having one person speak on the behalf, or they're speaking each on their three minutes?
That's our policy.
That's, I just want to need clarification about.
Our policy is, is that whenever we have a subject that there's a repetitive, somebody coming, everybody coming up and saying the same thing, we have one spokesman, that's our policy.
Never heard that.
It's been, it's been that away for a long time.
Well, I think we should probably give an update of what we covered in the workshop that may, you know, and ask, you know, we're not going to vote on that today, on that item, so that could alleviate some people.
Doug, I haven't seen too many faces that have changed in the audience.
But we're going to vote.
So all I'm asking is that if there's any motions to be had, that we do it right after the public comment, instead of waiting.
I don't mind moving it.
I don't mind moving it.
I'm just saying.
I'll second that.
It may not, it may not be the right time for them to voice it there. We're really not going to be voting on this till then.
No, we're going to vote on it right after public comment. No.
That's why we're moving the agenda item.
That's why we're moving it.
I'm moving the agenda, I'm asking to move, I move, to move Agenda Item 11A.
To 6A.
To 6A. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Totally different than public comment.
Right. After public comment.
So then, okay, so then it's 5A. Those are the two items?
It would be 6A.
6A.
But my point was, we made a decision in the workshop that we are not voting over against the analog agreement today.
Well, we have to review, we have to review that. Let's, let's just one thing at a time. So let's make a motion to the two, to the changes. One is full Agenda Item 13A under request by the Stony Brook Board, and two is to relocate the, what was it?
11A to 6A.
11A to 6A. To 6A.
Is that your motion?
Yes. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second or a favor?
Hi.
All right.
Now approve of, on all agenda.
So now the agenda is approved, okay.
Okay. These are public comments.
The majority of them are for the interconnectivity issue, but we do have a few other agenda items and a couple of non-agenda items, so. First up is Perry Dragon regarding item, which is now 6A, interconnectivity. Just a reminder, you have three minutes. I'll start the timer after you give your name at the podium. Little thing over here, when you see it flashing yellow, wrap it up, you're almost done.
And just a final reminder, it's very difficult for me and I don't know for board members, when you guys do have side conversations during the meeting, if you choose to do so, I would just ask that you step out and you do not close that door. I appreciate it.
Perry Dragon?
Perry Dragon.
Was it P or T?
That was quick, thank you. First off here, I'm looking at the letter.
You can pronounce yourself. Give your name, for the record. Your name.
Perry Dragon.
In what community, Perry?
And I'm with Pelican Preserve. I'm looking here at the letter from Fay Formosa to the Board. I just want to go on the record saying that I concur with her recommendations, and then some.
What are you referring to? I don't understand what you're referring to. What, what were you holding?
A letter that Fay Formosa sent to the Board, I think yesterday, by email.
I don't know what we're talking about.
The legal, Pelican's legal opinion.
I didn't get it. How's come I didn't get it?
So we don't.
Who'd you go to?
With everybody.
What about in your Gateway email?
I didn't have it. It was in my mail.
Yeah, I was going to ask you to do that.
I saw what you got.
Okay, you start from scratch.
Start it over.
Okay, sorry. Basically, what Fay was saying, and I concur, is that we need to take more time and look at this in more detail, do more due diligence, and take more time. From my perspective, it needs to be done right, whether it takes two months, six months, or two years. The, from the discussions in the work session this morning, I'm encouraged that it looks like that you are willing to spend more time and get more due diligence done, so that we know the repercussions of this repeal of Rule 6. You know, from my perspective, looking at this statement of estimated regulatory costs, I disagree. Now, the attorney that did this, obviously, he thinks differently, but I personally think that these numbers, the costs are going to be quite a bit higher than what's indicated in this document, but we'll see what happens when you do your due diligence. I just don't see any reason to rush into this, and I think you need a lot more public input. In particular, this time of year, when half of our people are gone, is not a good time to do this. I think we need to do this when the people are here to voice their opinions. And, you know, the way I look at it is that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. It's been working, from my perspective, pretty well for 20 years. The other thing I'll caution you about is unintended consequences. There's a lot of moving parts to this thing, and I don't think it's very clear at this point whether the people at Pelican or outside of Pelican are going to come up better or worse, or what will happen. So I certainly encourage you to spend the time, whatever it takes, to get it done right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Tom Shaner, same topic.
Good afternoon, I'm Tom Shaner, Vice President of the Pelican Preserve Community Association, and I am here today to express the community's opposition to any effort to repeal the interconnectivity rule. Perhaps more importantly than objecting to the repeal of the rule of today's meeting, it is critical that, on behalf of the more than 2,500 residents of Pelican Preserve, who are not in Florida at this time, I point out that how unfair and unnecessary it is for the Board of Supervisors to appear to want to fast-track the effort to repeal the rule. In fairness, if nothing else, you should delay the process for repealing the rule until the required public hearing can take place at a time when all of those who will be adversely affected by the proposed change will be here and will have a true opportunity to participate in the hearings. There is simply no rush, and it is totally unfair to change the rule at this time. Further, as noted during your workshop, should the Board continue with its efforts to repeal Rule 6, the information and facts that have been presented thus far seem to be lacking, and in terms of allowing all parties to best understand the ramifications of the change, we need to get to know those rules. I'm going to skip over what I said about the cert. I have reviewed all the minutes associated with the adoption of Rule 6 and note that it was adopted with a rational explanation, recognizing that from the onset, that the residents of Pelican Preserve had and still have no direct access to Gateway. Even your legal counsel has pointed out through history that the level of tax has to have a benefit accruing to the property for an assessment to be imposed upon that property. There is no new benefit accrued by the residents of Pelican Preserve by repealing Rule 6. Your attorney states at another meeting of the Board, assessment for capital improvements probably could not be assessed until roads connect. Rule 6 has been in place for 20 years, and Pelican Preserve residents have relied on it when acquiring and keeping their property with the understanding that they would not be paying taxes to maintain improvements that do not benefit them as historically determined by the GSCDD. Nothing has changed to alter that standing. The repeal of Rule 6 may not be taxation without representation, but it is surely taxation without benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Rod Senior. He has the same topic, and it says not Agenda Item.
Good afternoon, all, fellow residents. I find it curious Stephen Blum's comments that we, excuse me. Excuse me, my name is Rod Senior from Gateway Greens, thank you. Stephen Blum's comments that we do an annual review for the capital assessments and play it each year as it goes. However, we didn't do that with O&amp;M, because we relied on a 19-year-old rule. So why didn't we do it for O&amp;M, and why was the rule necessary? If that's the case, if we can do it year on year. Statute 190 or 21, subsections 2 and 3 make it very clear, they've got the district has permission to apportion benefits and do assessments as it sees fit. And Tony Pyer's opinion of April the 5th, 2007, in the minutes, conflicts with Rule 5. Rule 5 gives Pelican Preserve exemption from O&amp;M. Tony Pyer's opinion of April the 5th, '07 says that they do not get exemption from O&amp;M. They should be included. That being said, those minutes were never corrected, and that's curious to me. Minutes matter. Now, I want to express my thoughts to my friends in Pelican Preserve. I hold no animosity to you guys. You know, this is, this is not a vendetta. I think the rule should be repealed, and it's because if I'd had 19 years of exemption, I'd have been happy too. I live in Gateway Greens, but I paid. So it's a question of doing what's right. I like the idea of getting a third-party counsel. I don't think it should be our own attorney, and I don't think it should be Pelican Preserve's attorney. I'd like to offer Chefi Pasidomo as one thought. They're a known entity in Naples, they're good, and they're known to this district, and they have no conflicts. My last point about another agenda item is the park. We were all, some of us were at the town hall meeting, survey was, survey was conducted among Gateway, 51% said no. I think Pelican Preserve residents ought to have, afford the courtesy of completing the survey as well. I think that the bids on this park that are currently out, I think that should be deferred. There's no rush on the park either, and I think the whole park debate should be deferred because the repeal of Chapter 6 needs to come first, because that's going to determine how the Pelican Preserve supervisors vote on the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. I know. Thank you for leaving time, Rod. I think that's the first one. Gary Edson, and thank you for putting the phonetic of your name on here for me. Same topic, 11. We're now 6A.
Thank you. My name's Gary Edson. I'm a 24-year resident of Southwest Florida, and I currently reside in Pelican Preserve. I'm here today to express my opposition to the effort to repeal Rule 6 and the interconnectivity rule. Simply stated, it ain't broke, don't fix it. I want to know what is wrong with the Gateway-Pelican Preserve arrangement. To me, nothing. Do Pelican Preserve owners use Gateway amenities? Not really. Do they shop there, eat there, use the county roads? I did when I lived in Cape Coral. Like any other resident and non-resident, I was allowed to do, so I don't understand that, that argument. The attempt by the Board of Supervisors to control other areas, to me, is nothing more than a lamb grab to increase the organization's coffers. What are the ramifications? They haven't been really clearly stated, and I appreciate that you recognize that. Will such an annexation increase the use of Gateway amenities by Pelican Preserve residents and others? Not likely, but if it did, what kind of pressure would that put on those facilities? And all of a sudden, would the current users still be able to use it at the luxury that they have today? The other thing is, what's the rush? Most snowbirds are out of town. Is transparency such a bad thing? I think it's clearly time to stop this madness, and I speak as myself and as a resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right, next up is Gary Cooper, same topic.
Gary Cooper, Pelican Preserve. I'll be very brief. I was going to, let me just say this. I think this idea about cost and benefit is very important in this decision, so I would ask you to keep that in mind. But I also wanted to remind everybody that on November 15th of 2023, we're in this very room on a rainy night, and our district manager was good enough to invite the solid waste management people from Lee County to come and speak to us. And as you recall, at that time, there was a lot of controversy over this recycling plan, and it was something that was started in 2020, and it went on. Well, at that meeting, the people from Lee County understood that this is going to be a problem of concern, and to their credit, they spent the next six, seven months at meetings, going to individual people's homes, coming to Pelican Preserve, and expressing their concerns. Now, I doubt very much that most Pelican residents would say, well, now we're happy with the recycling plan. But what they will say is the county made a yeoman's effort to explain their position, to tell everybody they were concerned. I like that process. As somebody that spent 30 years as a public sector administrator, I like that process of bringing people together over and over and answering all the questions. I doubt, similarly, I doubt that you're going to get people in Pelican to like an increase in taxes, but at least they know that they've been heard, that there's a concern, that they have some efficacy in this decision. So I would say, for the purpose of ongoing relationships, that people would say, we were listened to, I would urge you as well, as many other people have and will, to slow this process down, to take your time, to do multiple meetings, and not just one public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right, next up, Ed Hedges, same topic.
My understanding is that you want to repeal the entire Section 6, which is, establishes principles for the annual budgets, and if you, my understanding is if that's repealed, the guidelines, you know, what are they going to be going forward? That's some of what you were discussing in the workshop. It's really unclear how those assessments will be made. With that repealed, there will really not be defined specialized services or facilities. Most of the discussion seems to be on allocating the cost of the park and the soccer complex, you know, to get Pelican to pay a share of that. There's a lot, I think there's going to be a lot of unintended consequences to some of this potential action that you haven't clearly, you know, thought through. One of the things, there's, those generate revenue. Right now, that revenue flows to the 001 general fund. Is that going to be split? As Ed brought up, there's, you know, the capital portion of this, is Pelican going to be asked to pay for a larger share of the park and some of those expenses? That meant, that Rule 6 states that the costs of Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Drive are properly allocated only those properties that connect to those streets. If this rule goes away, is Pelican then going to be asked to pay, you know, a share of I've gone back and read through all the, all meetings from about 2000 on Board of Supervisors meetings, and at the time, this rule was put in place, other than the water management facilities, all the other O&amp;M costs of district assets in Pelican Preserve were being paid for by the Pelican Preserve Community Association at the time, and there was no anticipation that they would ever be paid for by the district. You know, if this rule is pulled, will the cost to operate and maintain the district assets that are in Pelican Preserve, you know, will the non-Pelican residents be asked, have to pay their share of those? Those are district assets, they're not Pelican assets. Yeah, they're behind a guardhouse, but Tony continues to tell us that those are public roads. Everybody has access to those roads, and I'm sure there are about as many people use the Pelican streets and paths for jogging and riding their bicycles as Pelican residents use the soccer complex and the swimming pool over here. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ed. All right, next up, Carol Brockie, same subject.
Carol Brockie, Pelican Preserve. I'd like to thank all of you. Your workshop was very informative, and a lot of information and shows a lot of effort on all of your parts. I'd also like to thank Rod Senior for suggesting that Pelican should be able to fill out the survey on the park. I mean, if we are all one district, we need to have everything put to that. I appreciate Mr. Banks's comments on the justification. I think that's vital. I think to verify that is vital, and I also think to have a third-party attorney. Having laypeople, even though they're dedicated and do a lot of research, reading the 190 statutes, there are so many nuances, and lawyers who are educated in this way, and especially CDD attorneys, to be able to see the things that we all don't see. We can't assume anything. Part of the history of Pelican Preserve, my husband and I have been there since 2001, and in 2004, 2005, there were probably only about 400, possibly 600 residents. We had Dan Warner, who was a Pelican resident, who was on the CDD board, and I've read his minutes, and that show that Dan Warner asked the CDD board if they would provide someone to come to Pelican, well, then Sun City, oh, I think in 2004, we were Pelican, to explain what a CDD was. I mean, the Rule 6 was all initiated by WCI, the developer, and the discussions, I mean, were so different. I think things are way different in 2024, if evidence of our participation at county meetings. I mean, 500 residents, Pelican residents showed up at those meetings at the county. We are a different community, not developer-controlled, and we do pay our share as we go for those things. We need the utmost in legal thing, and I would appreciate that you would postpone the, get your information first. I mean, no one signs a contract today without knowing the costs. You're not going to sign a blank document, and that's what you're asking for us if we put the cart before the horse. So please consider postponing the public hearing on this rule. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. New topic. Mr. McCollough from Stony Brook, street sweeping.
Joe McCollough, Stony Brook, at Gateway, and for the first time since 2009, I am here as just a resident. I just want to say that I'm here just to speak about the plan to sweep our streets, and I will also tell you that we're not happy about it, because you want to charge our 004 budget, and we don't think that's where it should be appropriately charged to, because the purpose is to, basically, it's my understanding about the drainage, the rain sewers, am I correct about that, and the quality of the water in the lakes? And if that's the case, that should be 001, which we pay the full share into the 001 that everybody else does. And we're also concerned about the potential adverse effect upon the treatment that we put on the roads just earlier this year, and quite frankly, I drove around the streets just yesterday looking at them. They're pretty clean. I don't really think we need to sweep them on a monthly basis. So I think that'd be a waste of money, and certainly, we don't want to waste our money, so that's our opinion, and I am speaking from neighbors. That's all I have.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, Margaret Feinberg, same topic.
Margaret Feinberg, Stony Brook, at Gateway. The NPDES is related to stormwater management, that's the answer to your question, and it's not an obligation of Stony Brook. All stormwater-related issues is an obligation of the 001 general fund. The NPDES permit has been in place for years, so my question is, what has prompted this change in the Gateway Services CDD sweeping, street sweeping policy? Why is it suddenly having to be done in a small portion of the community on a monthly basis? Where is the requirement for 100% of the roads that are actually owned by the CDD to be swept monthly? I cannot find any regulations. I went to all the websites I could get to, and there's nothing that gives a requirement of how often streets have to be swept for this permit. So if you've got information on that, I'd sure like to have it. The stormwater from other Gateway Services CDD community streets enters the same stormwater system as Stony Brook. Are these other Gateway communities expected to sweep their streets monthly? Where can I locate all the specific requirements for maintaining this NPDES permit? That's what I'd like to know, because other than sweeps, street sweeping, there has to be other requirements, and that's what I'd like to know. What are the specific requirements? And as Joe said, we have concerns about the treatment that was just recently done to the roads. How will that be affected? Is that street sweeping going to be scraping that, the surface of that off? So the Stony Brook Board is 100% against the street sweeping in Stony Brook, and we certainly don't see it coming out of the 004 funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. All right, next up is Peggy Hall from P-PAC to give an update on the art loan decision.
Hello, Peggy Hall from P-PAC, and wanted to make sure that you were aware that at our last meeting, we did very thoroughly discuss the art loan, and the gentleman that had come to your prior meeting made it sound like it was just a flip decision. Not at all the case. We went through the contract, and in front of you, you should have our summary of why we determined that it wasn't a good fit for the location that they had indicated. Those two parcels of land are looking to be sold as soon as we can peel them off. They serve no benefit to have tree line and colonial monuments that say Pelican Preserve. That's not our entrance. So we did want to make sure that you understood that this was a thoughtful process. We are not just turning away free art. There was a cost associated. We had to prep the land. If we decided within 20 years that we wanted to get, to move the art, we would have to not only move it, we would have to pay the engineering costs and prep the site and move it. So it encumbered us quite a bit for things that we did not believe provided any value. That location is blocked by retention pods, and it, to me, it didn't seem like a good, there's no good way to access them to see, and they are so small that they are not going to be visible necessarily from the roads. So we just wanted to make sure you are aware that we had a thoughtful process behind this, and this was why we declined it, in case they come back to you and ask you to override. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. All right, one last public comment, Ms. Robert Spencer, regarding flood control, Oaks, and security.
11732, mahogany run, 15 years, I guess. I have three things. First of all, whoever is in charge of supervising the security, at least in our area, I like the way they're going about. the way they're going about it, I like the people. I think they're doing a good job in limiting and at least monitoring who comes into the community and who is ever responsible. Keep doing what you're doing to supervise it, because it's a good job, I think. I wish we could use our collective political, nonpartisan political influence to get the county to come into this area more often with the speeding and so forth, even with the roundabouts. You did a good job on those. I was skeptical, honestly, but they've slowed down, eliminated a lot of the trucks, so that was a good move. So thank you. Secondly, the trees. Two years ago or so, we went through Michigan, eastern shores of Michigan, Lake Michigan, and they advertise in their advertising for tourists and so forth, the tunnel of trees. And it is indeed beautiful, especially in the fall. But thank you for who's ever maintaining the oaks to the extent that they are right now, because in fact, there is a tunnel of trees in a number of areas in our community, and I want to suggest to you that the payments that you make to maintain the walkways are well worth the expense that we gain by the value that, and the aesthetics and beauty of what Gateway Greens in particular represents to this community and the housing, values of our housing. The third thing I'd like to suggest to you, if we get a storm of the century and our streets flood, all of these communities are going to be impacted by what we do with the weirs. And if, I understand that they're all connected, but we have a bigger system that the state, city, county, and feds all determine what we do with those weirs. So if we drop those weirs in hurricane season, and we don't get subsequent rain to fill them back up, we lose the beauty, of course, but we also are restricted and it costs us on what we can do as in irrigation, for example. So I want, like to suggest something. Why don't we use the properties that we have, like the soccer fields, or the area by the community pool on Gateway, and drop the level to make two more lakes, and use the residual earth that we move out and make an earthen bleachers, which would be a nice thing for the people that come to watch soccer or participate, but have two emergency lakes, and the lakes would be such that you could, we could control that within Gateway without going through all the red tape or getting the approval from all those other agencies, and in that process, give us a shock absorber on flooding of our streets if we get a tremendous storm, like we had a little bit with Charlie and you.
I'm just going to ask you to wrap it up.
Thank you.
I have no more public comments. Anything that came through email, you've already received, because you were all copied on it.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. Local achievement, you want to, 6A?
I thought we were going to put agenda on 11A.
Yes, discussed. All right, interconnectivity discussion. Doug, you ready to make your motions?
Yeah, so for those of you that weren't here during the workshop, we did spend an hour discussing this item, and where we landed was not to vote on approving or not approving the interlock, but we did come to agreement on a couple items. Should I do those in unison? These, you know, the, we approve, council, we...
I would do separate, probably to be clear.
The first thing is that we've got to talk about the items that were in that deal, which was the repeal. The action that we had was, one, should we accept or do we accept Russ's report? And I would motion that we would accept Russ's report. I would then go to the next one, which was given to us, and that is to set a date of September 19th for the public hearing, and the third part would be to have the board authorize staff to retain independent counsel to do a study of Chapter 6.
I have a question. Would that be, do you have somebody in mind?
Yeah, I agree with Rod. Cheffy Pasadimo has worked with us, a guy named Cliff Broker, Brooker?
Clay.
Clay Brooker, sorry, thank you, is the attorney, is a CDD specialist. I would suggest that Chelsea talk to them and get a...
Make the decision.
Get an engagement letter to review Chapter 6.
What I would like to do is have staff do some due diligence on who might be, I don't have anything against any of the recommendations, but I think you need to look into who might be an expert or someone that could weigh in on this, just because I think, because you're driving some of this, I think...
Well, the issue is, the reason I brought that up is, we have used them before.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Not law firm before.
All I'm saying is that, I think, let staff do some due diligence in those and others, and then come back.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't go so far.
Can we take these items one by one?
Yeah, so why don't you, why don't you start with...
Okay, my first motion would be to accept.
Doug is lumping things together.
Yeah.
We are going to do it.
Well, but Ed started out with, we want to accept the report that Russ gave us.
Yes.
I think that's a technical thing. I don't think this board should accept it, meaning we would agree to it. It's a technical thing that has to be done and has to be filed, but I don't believe we need a motion to approve it or to agree with it.
I didn't say approve, I don't think I said approve. I said accept.
You said accept.
Accept. We need to accept that document, it was prepared by our consultant and expert. I don't see any reason we wouldn't want to.
Maybe you could use the words "place on record."
I'm sorry?
Maybe you could use the words "place on record."
The big question, do we, do we need to do that?
Rather than accept.
Counselor, do we have to accept that? Do we have to accept that document?
Let's just stay with, okay, let's just go back. Let's just go to the motions that we talked about at the workshop, which there were three.
Well, the reason I brought it up that way, though, is that if we're going to have a workshop, or I'm sorry, a public hearing, that document needs to be, and that's why you have to do it, if you read the rules, that document has to be a part of that.
It's a requirement, okay.
So it's a requirement. So we have to do that.
It's a requirement, but we don't have to accept it.
No, no, we, we, the statement of regulatory cost is a required document, it needs to be accepted. The, maybe, maybe there's a distinction between when you were speaking with Mr. Wire, there was a question about him doing analysis that would be reviewed at a later date.
It's separate.
But the statement of regulatory cost is something that needs to be accepted to move forward with the public hearing.
Which is what we received today.
That's what you received today.
We're accepting the document.
Accept the document, and you...
Could we change the word "accept"? Because I don't want it, I don't want people to get the idea that all of this board agrees with that, because in there, Russ not only wrote the document, but he put his answers to it. He was the one who wrote the answers.
That's, what's the real cost, or...
We, you do need to have that as a supporting document, and so in order to move forward with the public hearing, there has to be a statement of regulatory cost, and I would not advise changing the wording away from accept.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept Russ's SERC and to set the hearing date for September 19th.
I'll second your motion. I'll call for discussion.
Why do we have to have it by September? We're not going to get information until January. What's the hurry?
Because we agree that we're separating the items.
I'm with you, I'm okay.
Yeah, so...
Again, because we're separating, and we're looking at the totality.
We're not making the decision on, again.
Well, what we said is, we are voting on repealing, which there needs to be clear justification to do that. The cost implication, whether it's plus or minus, is secondary. So we're voting on the repeal, is there justification to repeal the interlock agreement? Yes or no? If it's yes, what, or what is the impact of that repeal? That can come secondary. Now, we want to get as much information as we can, and the reason why we're setting the date for September 19th is because that's, there's a timeline that we're trying to, you know, adhere to. We can, we can at any time pull that back, but this is just to keep the, to keep things moving positive.
Let me, let me put it this way. If we accept his recommendation, that's a standalone, has nothing to do with the September date.
Or with the March information, yes, correct.
Right. If we're only talking, we accept his report, period, without a date or anything else. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Okay, that's not what he's saying.
I'm accepting, I'm accepting the report, and to have a public hearing date set for September 19th.
No, absolutely not. I won't agree with that at all.
Okay, so that's his motion, I second the motion, and your discussion carries.
And Ed's motion is to combine the two, to accept and to set the date.
Because they're, because they're tied together. That's correct, because they're tied together.
They don't have to be tied.
They do by law, that's what our attorney just told us.
Well, I guess I just want to clarify what I said. You do need to accept the statement of regulatory cost before setting the hearing, but you, I'm, I'm not saying that they have to be in the same motion to the same date.
Even if we split them, are you pushing back on the date?
Do you want to separate the motion?
I just don't want to have it.
Set, okay, I'll make the...
Just split them.
We split it, I'm okay.
Hold on, you have a motion on the floor, please.
We have a motion on, we have a motion on the floor.
Well, I can't agree to putting the two together.
Well, you can amend your, you can amend your motion. Just amend and split them.
I'm not going to amend it.
I'm not going to amend it.
It's, the issue is, we need the public hearing, and to get to the public hearing, we have to accept the SERC, it's that simple. It's what the law says.
Well, Ed, the simplicity of it is, why do you insist on September?
Because I want the rule repealed.
Okay, but that's fine, but we've already said we're going to do a lot more research.
And you can't repeal the rule until you've gone through the steps. Counselor, would you please tell them that you cannot have a vote on the repeal until you have the public hearing?
We're not debating that.
Okay, go ahead, Zach, and answer that.
Well, you don't have the public hearing.
Okay, let's second, and I have, I have a comment, go ahead.
Well, no, I'm just, I don't think that was what the question was. I mean, I think that, I think you're indicating timing questions versus procedural. Procedurally, yes, you need to have the hearing, yes, you need to accept the statement of regulatory cost. I don't know that that's the dispute that's going on.
That's not the dispute.
Your dispute is, is September.
Tying in September date. You separate them, I'm all for it.
Because when this topic first came up, Ed, this board talked about not even talking about it until September 19th.
No, no.
We were going to begin to, we were going to do the budget today, we were going to get all of that settled, and then we were going to start on this on September 19th. That was the original discussion. Now Ed comes charging through, and he wants to set the date for the public hearing. People are going to come to the public hearing and say, how does this affect me? And we won't know.
And that's what we...
So what is the purpose of having the public hearing?
We're repeating, still, the rule.
In March, or in September, September 19th. Why that date? Why are you pushing that date, Ed?
Because you've got, you've got a process. You're not listening. This started, this started, this started that the motion made back July 18th was to initiate the process to repeal. There was no vote, we couldn't take a vote. We were told by council that the first thing you have to do is retain a firm. We did, our firm, and he prepared the document that we have to have to take to a public hearing. That's where we're at right now. We've got the document, there is no reason, no reason whatsoever outside of the 30-day advertisement and having the attorney to come in to have the second opinion, to have, not have that meeting September 19th.
Were you not in the workshop when we talked about the need to get the numbers before you were going to do it?
It doesn't have anything to do with the deal.
It has a lot to do with it.
We're talking about two different things. We're talking about repealing.
Okay, we got a motion, I mean, we're all set on what we're going to do.
Anything else?
No, there's a motion, there's a...
So we have a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, 3-2.
So Doug is good with setting it on September 19th. That's what you just said you don't.
For setting the...
For setting the date for the public hearing.
For a public hearing.
For a public hearing, yes.
On September 19th.
Yes.
Without having any data.
Because the date only is going to come in March.
No, January.
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 Well, the prevailing, I'm just going for March for fine, okay, let's move to...
Oh, I mean, I got one last question, just for clarification. What is the purpose of the public meeting?
Okay, we already made a motion, we can have that conversation as supervisor comments. I will absolutely make a note, you can have that conversation at that time. All right, approval of...
Wait, wait.
No, there are more.
There's three steps.
Three more, yes, go ahead.
So I make a motion to direct staff to engage outside counsel for review of the interlock agreement.
Chapter 6.
Chapter 6, with the expectation of a decision or an opinion due back prior to September, what's the, September 19th. We probably need a little bit before that for review.
Yeah, just have it honor before the 19th, preferably. I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and discussion?
What's the purpose of that?
Does that mean that this person, isn't it anybody that Ed mentioned or that Rod Senior mentioned?
No, he just said to let staff interview.
Yeah, that's why I simply said, let staff do the research to, to engage. There are some recommendations, but I think staff should be responsible to find someone that's unbiased.
Chelsea knows what she's doing, she can handle that.
It was nice of you to recommend, then, why did you, why did you, we're still discussing. Yeah, why did you recommend certain people to do it?
Well, he didn't recommend, Rod did, but...
Well, he did too.
He did too.
We've used the firm before.
That's not my question. Why did you, you don't think she knows that?
They have knowledge of CDD rules.
Honestly, I don't want anybody you recommended, period. I want unbiased.
Well, and that's the decision we'll make then.
Surprise, surprise.
Well, I know, I'm as surprised as you are.
So that's a decision later on.
I've talked to these people, I know what they're going to tell me, so I'd like to have them.
Okay, Rod, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion for clarity? No? I'll call approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
4-1.
I have one point of clarification with regards to setting of the public hearing. We have identified a, an alternative location, we just need confirmation. Do we know what church, this church over here? I just need approval from this board to authorize that location for the public hearing.
You ought to get the Red Sox Park.
You're going to need a lot of room.
I think, I was going to say, I think you need bigger room.
A bigger room?
Actually, what I think we should probably do is have a town hall prior to the, maybe the public hearing, just have it more of an open discussion.
But I think we'd be off-base if we're talking about the stuff that would be presented at the public hearing. I think you'd be off-base.
How about the Gateway High School? Because they have a huge...
I think you're going to need 300 to 400 people.
All right, authorization for us to find a suitable location for up to 500?
I'd say 500 people.
Up to 500 people?
Yes.
I just need your authority to do that.
You need a motion to that?
Motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All opposed?
Opposed, I thought I heard you say aye.
I just, I just...
Yeah, good hearing. Thinking of you.
And then one, I think Doug had another motion.
Yes, the final one.
So the motion is to direct Russ to complete the, what would we call it?
SERC.
Financial impact of the...
Yeah, the financial impact or SERC study. Methodology to be, to be delivered in January with this first, first iteration, first draft.
And finally, I would like to add the final part of that motion.
I'd like to, but guys, let me, let me throw something out here. This is not that simple. Are you going to tell him to do it with the basis that Chapter 6 is repealed or Chapter 6 stays?
Should do it both ways.
Do it both ways?
Yes. Let's do it.
I'm planning both ways.
Okay, so I'll include that in the motion that Russ will, will have iterations both with the interlock and without, with Chapter 6 or without.
I'm going with that.
Okay, so we have a motion, I'll second that motion.
So we're going to do a complete methodology?
With and without. Yes, one with and one without.
And we ought to schedule it for our January the 16th meeting.
Well...
That's the second meeting in the month, because the first is January 2nd.
Well, we need that from Russ, and I don't think...
Well, I know. Give him a target date to present to us.
I'm fine with, if we can direct him, we have a meeting on January 16th, we need it prior to that.
Right.
I will bring back...
Seven days before.
Any contractual obligations in front of the board at your next meeting to ratify.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, for the discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, zero. All right, local achievements and resignations, do we have anything, Chelsea?
I do not.
Okay, so any committees and items to report?
I was not able to go to the last paper, or parcel rec meeting. Did anybody else?
I was out.
Oh, actually, I have one from P PAC.
I'm just going to ask you guys, if you want to take side conversation again, can you just please step out of the room? I don't have anything.
I do have an update from the P PAC meeting. Another, in additional to the update regarding the artwork that Peggy gave earlier, they did make a formal request for us to start the process of them paying off their 2013 bonds, so we are working on that in the background. There's a lot of moving parts, and we will have that on the agenda for the board on the 5th of September to review.
Thank you, Laura. Approval of the minutes?
I move to approve agenda items 8A and B.
I have a problem with 8A.
Okay.
In 8A, we're getting a summary. The detail, I'll talk to specifically supervisor and comments on interconnectivity. There was a lot of give and take. I want to see the verbatim. I'm not happy with the summary. I'll leave it at that. I think that this is important enough that we need to have a verbatim.
Okay, those are minutes. They're not verbatim. We used to have them that.
We used to do verbatim.
There's like significant costs involved getting verbatim minutes.
You're asking for a transcript essentially, and do we have that tape available?
Yep, it's on YouTube.
So why do we need to have a transcript to pay for that?
Why do we have this?
When we've got it. Well, these are minutes.
Minutes as summary.
All right, well, I'm making a motion, or I'll make a motion. I'm making a request right now. I would like to have the verbatim because this didn't cover near the discussion that was held on a very important topic, and I would like to be able to look at it and make notes as I go through it.
Just for clarification.
And this transcript is only for the portion of the meeting that had to do with the interconnectivity.
With 15. But I've had this problem on some other things we've done. But anyway, this one right now is what I'm talking about.
Okay, Zach has a...
There's a pending motion with no second. Is that motion going to be withdrawn and this motion made? Or what would you prefer to do here?
We need a second.
Carol made a motion and no second in it.
I made a motion to approve both of the minutes. Is anybody going to second it?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion, a second?
I objected to A, to the minutes of the 18th.
No, why don't you make a supplemental motion after this one?
Whatever I got to do, that's what I'm doing.
Well, you can only do one motion at a time.
Well, that's what I thought.
Carol, you made the original motion, so if you amend...
We first should say, are there any items to pull with A and B?
Right, and I have a problem with A.
So there's a motion and a second to approve minutes A and B. I would suggest call the vote, and then if it fails, then a second motion can be made.
But if it passes, then I can't give my verbatims. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
You want to withdraw your motion?
I will withdraw my motion.
There you go.
All right.
Easy thing.
So I'll make a motion to approve item A, B.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Wait.
Yes, now we're going to do A because we did one at a time.
Oh, 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 okay. Nine V is what you just...
Eight.
Eight.
Eight, eight, I'm sorry. I thought you...
We're now on 8A.
On approval of 8A, I would like to have the minutes reissued and to have the verbatims for item number 15.
Okay, so that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second or a motion? We have a motion and a second. Zach, you had a comment?
No, I have no comment.
Okay.
What's the ballpark cost of doing this?
No idea.
It shouldn't be anything. You can just pull the transcript off.
It's not verbatim.
Not a verbatim.
We will have to pay Infomart, we'll have to pay Infomart to do a verbatim.
I'll pay for it. I'll pay for it. Let's go.
All right, so we have a...
There's tools you could do just to record it and transcribe it.
Yeah, that's exactly right. We used to do this all the time.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you are not approving those minutes. You're pushing them to the next meeting so we can get the verbatim.
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
And let me know if Infomart comes back with some ridiculous price because I could probably do it in 10 minutes.
Got it. Thank you.
You might consider retracting that.
I know. I was like, oh.
I run, I have...
I've done it before. It is a lot of work.
Well, if, you know, an aside comment, when we went back and looked at '07 and '05 meetings, there's a lot in there that you wouldn't get in a summary of this. And this item is going to be a very sensitive item, and I think it's worthy that anyone can...
We got it.
It would probably help to go back, see if we could track while we're doing capital where we are today if we had actually verbatim minutes.
Right, so consent agenda items, I'd like to pull consent agenda nine A.
Pull it?
Pull it.
Why?
A second.
I'm just going to pull it. I'll tell you why in a minute.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second. I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I've got an issue on 9A. Let me throw it out and maybe put some...
Or we just pull it?
Yeah, I know, but we're now discussing.
Oh, okay.
I understand what Margaret and Joe said, but taking that to the next step, I'll send my bill for my street sweeping to Gateway Greens over here, 2,000 a month. Mine's the same as yours. It's all M P D S related. Daniels Preserve will want to do it. Silver Lake will want to do it. All the other communities that are doing street sweeping, if we take that deal, which I don't, I understand your position on that, on M P D S permit, but what's good for the goose is good for the gander. If we do it in one community, we do it in all.
Aren't your roads private?
That's what I was going to say.
Doesn't make it, this doesn't impact private or public roads. Doesn't make any difference. It's M P D S permit.
You're talking about infrastructure.
It's stormwater, using the basis of what you said.
I like the legal opinion on that.
It's stormwater, it's stormwater basis. It's stormwater basis. And if it's stormwater basis, mine's stormwater basis. Daniels Preserve's a stormwater basis. Yours is stormwater basis.
So the reason, I will tell you the reason why I wanted to pull this. I did have a conversation with JT, which is their H O A president, and their board were opposed to paying, and I was kind of conflicted with Margaret's statement because what he explained to me was, and he couldn't attend the meeting, but he did send an email out to Chelsea and myself asking for this item to be pulled, he just did not agree with this item being paid by Stony Brook Funds. And that was his biggest concern, and then the secondary concern was the damage to the road, which I told him, if the company hasn't provided that to you, that's going to make a damage. I really don't necessarily want to be looking at that at the table. And then he mentioned Pelican Preserve, and which is in there. So my thought is, if we are going to absorb this as out of Stony Brook, then we should also absorb Pelican Preserve.
Well...
So that was the motion.
Who pays the Lee County group?
So that's the motion that I was willing to do, and that's the reason why I pulled, because if we're going to go and pull opposite of what Ed wanted it, which is we're going to pull in Stony Brook and absorb O 1, we're also going to do that to Stony Brook. Now, what Ed, what I want to know from council or from Chelsea is, my understanding on this meeting earlier when we talked, that it is only the gateway, the roads owned by Gateway, which is Griffin, Gateway Boulevard, and that's why those costs are breaking down. So it would not include Magnolia Lakes, Silver Lakes, Gateway Lakes, not because they are not Gateway-owned roads, but now there's a secondary part. Is it because they're owned by Gateway, Zach, or is it because it's infrastructure, stormwater-related? Because that's two different things.
It's big, that is the whole issue.
I was, I'm fine, I was fine earlier with having Pelican's version plus Stony Brook's version pay out of O 1, but if Ed is saying that it is stormwater related, then... Water management, yes.
Yeah, I can. Can I try again?
Please, we missed you.
Tony.
Oh, no.
Hi, Tony.
Hi, the N, yes, yeah, the district is a co-permittee.
Conversations, Tony, and now you're just...
I'm sorry, no, I... If I may, yeah, the N P D S is National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Act. And the district is a co-permittee with a whole bunch of other districts, and Lee County's the lead permit holder. And there are a number of criteria that need to be analyzed each time the district files its report that's required under the N P D S permit. And part of that is, what does it do to control, operate, maintain, and control its stormwater management and drainage system? They, you know, they look for numbers like how much litter did you pick up? How much leaf did you get out of the catch basins? How much silt and sediment? And street sweeping is also a component of it. So I don't know how it's been budgeted, how it's been funded, but to the extent that it's for the purposes of operating and maintaining the district's stormwater management system, you know, that's a legitimate district expense for the overall system, is an argument.
Okay, Tony, my question, my question is, are you saying that to all roads that have, all roads, or you're just saying Gateway-owned roads only?
Well, no, where Gateway has stormwater management or drainage responsibilities.
Tony, the rule says, and it's shown above, it says conduct street sweeping on permittee-operated streets, highways, and other rights-of-way that have curb and gutter. So any...
Okay, permittee. Okay, does it say permittee?
Yes, that were operated streets and roads. So we're co...
It doesn't talk about permittee stormwater management systems?
No, it doesn't say anything about that.
Under this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then it's only...
So like, perfect example, we don't have to street sweep Soccer Drive because it doesn't have curb and gutter. All of Pelican has curb and gutter. All of Stony Brook has curb and gutter.
With those criteria in place, yeah, it would just be, yeah, those roads. If it doesn't require the overall stormwater, all drainage facilities, that's different.
And I also remember the budget discussion at P PAC. There was a line item for the first time this year, $75,000 for street sweeping. That was eventually cut way down to like $15,000 because it was a...
Got better pricing.
And that's what the cost is. So that's the cost that I'm...
But that is coming out of the O 2 account.
Which is the motion that I wanted to... Which is the motion that I wanted to make, to make it both items since they're required by us to come out of O 1, not stormwater, because they're not stormwater.
We got another issue here. Reading the King's English. It says curb and gutter.
Must have both, and that's...
You've got to have both.
Yes.
So if you just got a valley gutter, then there is no street sweeping required.
Only one side.
Only one road. That's Pelican. It's the only road with curb.
So you just...
Well, but Ed's pointing valley gutter. We don't have any curbs in Pelican. They're all valley gutter.
We got, we got curbs and gutters in Gateway Greens, and I agree with you. My main road is curb and gutter. All the rest of them are curbs or gutters.
This is an amount of time-sensitive item.
I was going to say, can we bring it back?
Yes.
Can we just bring it back with an accurate, because it would not be the amount of miles, and then at the same, check with Pelican and see what applies and what does not.
Okay, one other comment with this. I think I heard Tony say that he also should be keeping track of what they're pulling out of...
They do. They provide monthly reports.
Yeah, and...
How much green comes out? We get that? I was not aware of that.
We don't sweep Pelican, and we haven't historically.
I'm not sweeping. I'm not talking sweeping. I'm talking about, we clean the catch basins, but we don't require our provider to tell us what he gets out.
Yeah, Bob, I'm not sure it has to be exact. There's an N P D S report. What I suggest is those, I don't know if those have historically come before the board or not, but I think that might be a good opportunity for the board to have a presentation either by staff or the manager, whoever is preparing those reports, to put that in agenda packet.
You're volunteering to do that presentation.
I don't have, I mean, I can go through the printed document.
I don't have a problem with Tony. All I'm suggesting is, we are cleaning catch basins right now. We're not requiring our cleaner to tell us what he gets. And I thought I heard in what you were saying that that may be a future requirement, that I clean catch basin number 126, and I got eight inches of debris.
That may be a requirement. That's something to look at the report for.
So that's a follow-up with staff also. So we got that with Daniel and...
So what are you asking staff to do?
At this point, just to go back and reassess what are the linear areas on Stony Brook and Pelican Preserve that will fall within the requirements of this...
Pelican's 16 miles, I already know.
So it can be absorbed through the O 1.
Pelican's 16 miles.
But both with, you just told me didn't have gutters.
No, no, no. I said I valley gutter, not gutter.
You don't have curbs.
You don't have curbs.
Okay, so then they have to go back and assess it because you may have a smaller area. So 16 miles, what you have.
I don't know of any curbs.
So let staff go ahead and do that. It may be none, and if it's none, then you will pay for the $15,000 as you budgeted for. If you have any portion of it, then we would make a decision to absorb that. Same with Stony Brook.
Stony Brook's position is that it, that it shouldn't come out of O 4, period. Is there...
But we may not have a requirement to do it at all because it has to be, it has to have the valley gutters and the curbing.
And then we're saying there's one, and if that's the case, then it won't be done.
Exactly, yes. So let staff get back.
And there are private, there are private roads in Pelican also.
Any road that is district-owned and maintained has to be, that's curb and gutter, has to be street swept.
And we understand that, but the discussion is, Joey's saying you do not have...
If they have one, we have to street sweep it.
Exactly. We get that.
Okay, two, two questions.
Once a month is our...
How many other?
Is our district policy, right?
Yeah.
That's not a regulation. It's our district policy.
Are all of our other roads, the one that goes back to Eagle Creek, the one that goes back to Pine Crest, are all those curb and gutter?
We'll go back and double-check.
Okay, and then the other one is, is that for the communities that have curb and gutters, in the community that have private roads, what's the requirement relative to M P D S?
That I want to know.
Yeah, like a golf course. They've got private...
Oh, any, 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 any community, all of them, like everything.
Or a condo association that owns their parking lot.
I will say this.
If I have to be under the rule, then I want the same participation.
So I guess maybe staff, this could be quickly done. Like my community, it would imply because we don't have, we don't have...
Nothing's quick, Tony, but I like your optimism.
No, because we don't, we don't have, because they have to drive around. I don't have curbs. So right there, Silver Lakes only have it one side, so they don't have it.
We don't own the roads, period.
But what Ed is asking is...
For private natureways, what, how it applies to them.
And then we can just notify them. That's it. It's going to benefit a storm drain, just...
Well, they like to hear that. Okay.
We're not, we don't force anything. How about that?
What you'll find is...
And you want that by the next meeting.
Sure.
Well, it's not till next month.
That was easy.
That's easy, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I'm going to call the...
Get a golf cart drive.
Agenda item 9B, which looks like all the copiers that Tony has been doing the workaround to make them circles, circle their property.
So we have a motion, a second, a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, district engineer.
Steven, are you online? Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, everyone. Steven Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Today, I just have our task authorization update for y'all. All right, so the irrigation pump station generator project, we just got an updated schedule from our contractor. They provided a new schedule. They plan to receive the generator in February. They should be off the project in April of 2025. Irrigation enforcement improvements, this is for the redundant enforcement irrigation mains down the FPL easement. So Chen, the project engineer for that, met with Bill and Austin this week and has a couple more comments from them, so we're working through that, and we're also waiting for funding from H M G P. The Lower Hawthorne well, the well's been drilled. They've had some difficulties doing the work due to the wet conditions back on the property, so they're waiting for some of that ground service water to dry up before they proceed with additional work. Gateway utility, Gateway Utility Storage Building, we are waiting for the contractor to get the building permit, all of the materials on site. So they should have the permit in hand within the next few weeks. They'll be able to continue work. Gateway admin building, we are working through building review comments, and we're waiting for, we're going to be processing a change order with Chelsea, and we're waiting for price from Bowman on that one. Phase two, year two lake bank restoration. That's Matt Towers.
Steve, hold on a minute. A couple questions. Carol?
Yeah, do we have the permit yet from the county?
No, ma'am. They have to resubmit. For the building permit, we have to resubmit. Tetra Tech's working on that resubmission hopefully in the next week or so. And then for the amended D O, Tetra Tech...
What's a D O?
Development order to include the park improvements. Bowman and Tetra Tech are working on getting that resubmitted hopefully by tomorrow.
So we have not gone out for bid again?
Oh, no.
But I anticipate that by the end of the month.
Steven, what is the gist of the change order for review comments? What are they nitpicking now?
I think some of it was building code related. I'm not, I'm not really sure about all of them. Maybe Chelsea knows better than I do.
Yeah, so where Bowman and Rick Belansky is the successor engineer of the project, we have to do add pluses and minuses on those different task authorizations, as well as some additional work that was needed, so. But yes, the county is being nitpicking on everything.
But we are totally separating the park from the building.
Yes, costs are separated.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Stevie.
Go ahead, Steve.
All righty. Phase two, year two lake bank restoration. These are the last two lakes that Met Tower has on their schedule. They're still tentatively planning for late fall, early winter to start those. FY '24, Lake 78 and 82 are substantially complete. They're wrapping up their punch list now, and they should be finally complete before the end of this month. And the other four lakes, which MRI has, they're not going to start until the dry season. FY '25 lake bank design, we have permits, and today we found out from S R F that the projects were approved at the hearing yesterday for funding. So Chelsea and I and maybe some other staff have a meeting tomorrow to go over bid strategies, and we, you know, we'll talk about letting those for bid in the coming weeks and months. Public work storage building, we're working on, working towards 100% design on this project. Master park plan, we're addressing Lee County review comments. FGUA, this is the interconnect to the north on Griffin Drive. The contractor is working. They have completed the drill underneath State Road eighty-two. And they're starting from the east side in Lehigh and working towards Gateway with the open cut portion of the project. So no additional work has happened on Griffin Drive yet. BP Pond thirty-six, the contractor is getting closer to finishing the project. We have a meeting scheduled for next week to do a walkthrough and to develop a punch list. Lake one oh nine, this is the golf course side of Lake one oh nine. Extreme Divers is working on this project. I was out there today. They've made some good progress. They're about halfway done installing the fabric and they will start installing stone next week. Development updates, there's not a lot of new updates as far as development. Nothing's really changed. We've got a, we've provided comments for the Garrett FM project and they're gonna give us revised drawings for us to review one last time and then hopefully provide a recommendation to the board for approval. Everything else is kind of sitting where it was last time.
Lennar has requested that the utilities would phase three be conveyed to the district and so their request, they will be coming in front of you at your next board meeting with that.
The punch list been done?
Punch list has been completed and they're requesting to reduce the bond that we currently hold for the utility items, so that, that will be coming forthcoming.
And have we made the Arborwood Association aware of this?
Not yet.
And do they have any concerns?
Not yet. And they, they wouldn't have any concerns over the district assets of utilities because it would just be water, sewer and irrigation.
Not ponds.
Not ponds.
No stormwater.
No stormwater.
No stormwater?
Absolutely not.
Just as a, just to be nice, could we just tell them that this will be on the agenda next time?
The utilities? Yes, ma'am.
The Arborwood Association?
Yeah, we can tell them that they're looking.
The bond is up and they are, and if they have any comments, now's the time to make them.
When we, when we're talking about Arborwood, we just talking about the Gateway portion of it?
Yes, Arborwood Phase Three.
Doesn't their water come to, through Pelican?
No.
Oh, yes, it does.
Well, it may be metered as it comes through.
And no, I'm talking, I'm talking about sheet flow.
Oh, stormwater.
Yeah.
We're not talking, we're not, that's.
We're not doing stormwater.
Okay, I heard water. I'll tell.
Water and sewer.
What, their water that is in that community goes over to your pond next to the six hole, the sixteen.
It goes through Pestoia.
Yeah, it goes through Pestoia.
So we have Bill. Bill's gonna.
Bill Shaw, Gateway Utilities Manager. It ties in through Gateway Greens and through Pestoia. It makes it a loop. Yeah.
So Bill's talking about the utilities and I think Bob Gafford's talking about the stormwater.
I saw my stormwater.
Yeah, stormwater. Stormwater's got a forty-eight inch pipe that goes out of that pond, goes over and bubbles up in that conservation area.
And then it gets on thirty-eight, big time.
That I don't know.
Um, no.
All right, anything else, Steven?
Kudos on.
That is all.
Steven, you're the contractor with your guidance and all. I personally think he's doing a very good job on thirty-six. I'm very pleased with where they are. We've got to finish the punch list items, but it looks pretty darn good considering what we paid for it.
And when will it be done, done?
They think they're gonna be done next week, but there's usually a couple of items left to finish. So it'll probably be by the end of this month or maybe early September.
Okay.
If you've been out to look at it, they've done a really good job.
Yeah, they have. I walked what I could the other day.
It's a long walk.
It is.
That's it?
And, and there are no benches to sit down over there. That's an inside Pelican joke. Never mind.
I just love, just make part of it. All right, Chelsea.
Nothing else?
No, I know.
For, for district manager?
Thanks, Steve.
Yep, have a good night.
Thanks, Steven. You'll notice along Griffin that FPL and their boring crew have slowly been making their way down. They did set the first section of LED poles from eighty-two to the Gateway High School roundabout. So they're slowly making their way down.
Was that what they're doing out there?
Yes.
Ah, well, they're doing it today.
Can we, I know we talked to Tony about this, about the poles, like what we're planning to do with them afterwards. I think we're just.
Surplus.
Surplus, discard them, whatever. Can we look at maybe a couple of those to potentially use as foundations for shade structures?
That would be engineering.
In, in potential areas. I mean, I don't know if it's even cost effective, but.
The contract, I mean, as part of the contract that we signed, the contractor, they're removing and disposing. We might have one or two sitting in the yard here that are our old, are our old life holes. If you want to talk offline about your idea?
Biggest issue, like in a lot of our areas, and I'll just use the soccer field as an example in front of the concession stand, is just, there's no shade anywhere. And you can buy shade sales for, I mean, they're not that expensive. The biggest problem is mounting them to something.
Normally those have to be, they're normally they're pre-engineered and they tell you how deep you're, just like with the fun umbrella that came pre-engineered. It gave us specs on exactly how far we've set it.
My only comment is if there was a, if there was an opportunity to multi-purpose or to, you know, repurpose those for something that we could use.
Are they, are they concrete or metal?
Concrete.
That's very heavy with concrete.
Well, and it, it doesn't go anywhere either. Yeah.
So we did post a stormwaters environmental specialist one position. We hired her. Her name is Stephanie. She's.
She accepted offers. She's not officially hired yet because I'm still waiting on some stuff.
Okay. Anyway, she's supposed to start early September, so we're gonna be moving some desks around in here and shuffling with a little bit of space that we do have left. But we welcome her with open arms.
So they send the dash.
That'll be helping with L, is it?
Yep.
Yeah, it'll, yeah.
So will all our positions be full then?
No, ma'am.
What do we have out there?
We have some utility positions that are open.
Landscaping?
The landscape contract lead, I believe that's it.
We had the four.
So three positions.
Yep.
But not in the upper staff level?
Correct.
Correct.
So upper staff will now be full?
Yep.
It is full, yeah. Well, the landscape.
All right, and with that, we'll do department reports.
Any questions for me? I don't have any.
No.
No.
Admin report.
Admin. Anything for public works?
I'll do my best to answer.
Public Works, we were out today. We've got a problem with scum, something on these ponds.
Algae.
I don't know if it's algae and I suggested Chelsea, let's get our vendor. It's not tied to the, below the water.
Is that the petri sauce, Chelsea?
Yes.
What we need to do is get a chemical analysis of that, one, find out what it is. At first, there was some discussion that it could have been impacted by the golf course project with roundup. But the problem is there's other golf courses, lakes that are clear as well. No, no algae or whatever this stuff is. It is disgusting looking at and it's, it's, they come out. But I think we need to be telling our vendor, you can't ride that stupid cart up the bank. You've got to get in the lake. You've got to put a boat out there and spray this stuff because you can't reach it.
We already said that that's what we're doing to keep the bend. I mean, periodically, yes, doing, going around with a cart is what we want. But we were very clear about to be able to maintain the bend, you have to maintain the latoras from the inside.
From creeping in.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Well, but where, where it's.
So that's not happening?
Where it's at right now is when they go around, last two weeks ago was the first time I've ever seen a boat where they were spraying it. They were using a brush and they got it and they got it because they were close enough to it. But when they go along that shore, it's so far out in the water, they can't reach it.
High water, high water levels like now is the only time you really need to vote.
And are you saying, Ed, that this is, this is offshore?
Yeah, it goes out of the lake and it's wind, it's, that's what's bad.
The ponds are so full.
It's.
Because what I was gonna ask is, is why are you bringing it to the board as opposed to our vendor showing up in our.
Because I had an owner called me. I sent it to her and we both met out there today. They, they call me whenever anything.
No, 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 I get that. It was, it was a little bit rhetorical.
So can I answer that question? Because I was actually at her office and I saw the, the pictures. That looks like phylomentos algae. The best way to do is just send it out to, Ernesto have him tested and he'll go from there.
Can, will he do that?
Yes, absolutely. And, and second of all, our pond standards, this is gonna be your answer. Pond standard says that it only requires action by the district if it's above five percent of the total body of water, which that does not qualify. So yes, there's algae. Yes, it's not pleasant, but unless he reaches more than five percent of the total, total body of water, not linear, but total body of water, that's when the, we expect them to take action.
But I would, I would still expect a vendor to call out a watch item or flag. There is something visible in the, it is in the report? That's what I was asking. I didn't see it.
It's only gonna be, it's only gonna report for action on the report that isn't like a bug.
Yeah. It was a call out though. It was a call out.
I don't know the pond that he's talking about, but when, when they do their report, it does say mild.
Like something like that, it should be called out. Hey, just, there's no action, but there's a call out.
Yes.
The district may want to be aware that we've seen some visible something in the pond.
The, the, the problem is, is that like I said, it's wind blowing and it gets over into areas that it has no place to go.
Side pockets.
And it, yeah, and it looks horrible. It's just horrible.
Keeps moving.
And when wind blows the other way, the next day the other half of the community yells.
Yep, that's what happens. My thing is I just wanted to find out, confirm what it really is because the chemical he's using, and he's used quite a bit. It ain't working.
What was the, what, what did you?
Phylomentos algae.
L, that's what she identified it as well, so, but I did.
I just know, and so that's a combination of too, too much fertilizer and the too much sun going into the water and the, the, too hot of a temperature. So one of the solutions would be dye the water, which I made that mistake because they gave me two options, black or blue. And I was like, oh, I want blue. It looked like porta potty. Because it was not the blue that I was looking for. Like, it, like literally the whole, my whole pond was, I was looking like Caribbean blue. It was not what it came out.
That's exactly what L suggested and we're following that one.
And it, and it will give, three or four days and it's all gone.
And we moved from very, very low water to very, very high water.
Fast.
Unbelievably fast. And what happened when it was low is they were in there spraying to keep the latoras down. The latoras died. They all laid in the middle. It looked like crap and we had to react to that. And then all of a sudden it rained. The problem went away. Okay, because the little, the lake's filled up.
Anything else for public works? We missed Daniel.
I've got some very positive feedback on, at the pool with our. With, with the pool attendees and, and just the, and staff that we have out there, which is a little ironic because I have a son that works over there.
Good news.
Little hesitant to bring it up, but I've had a couple of people not, not even knowing.
Hopefully you'll see.
Has the Prado Gate been repaired? That's completely repaired.
Yep. The, hopefully the fun umbrella will fly soon enough. I know Karen was working on something, so keep an eye out on social media or stop by the pool in the next week or so and the fun umbrella will be up in the air. Anything else for public works? Daniel compiled this from afar for me, so.
Nothing else, so, right?
All right, utilities?
All the pilots are now completed? Highwood, Devonshire?
Hi, Bill.
Hi there. Bill Shaw, Gateway Utilities Manager.
Which one are you gonna take fir-, which one are you gonna take first?
Do you want to take, take the Stony Brook email that we got today, maybe?
Address that real quick.
Yep, okay, so there's been an ongoing issue prior to even me starting here at the master lift station in Stony Brook. And so there's been pretty constant complaints about the stench. Bill and his team have been diligently working on a permanent solution to this. There's currently an odor control in that master lift station. It does need a little bit of repair work, but the idea that Mr. Shaw has come up with is downstream of that. Upstream, upstream, aerating those. That way, by the time it gets to that master lift station, because that, how many does that master lift station, how many does it take?
So you're gonna, you want to aerate the incoming stations?
Yes.
With three or four incoming?
Yes, the four incoming stations.
Check, I've done this before. Check your detention times. Because if you aerate, you're talking about aerating the wet well. That has a time limit. If your time in the pipe exceeds three hours, getting from that station to where it's going to, which is the main station, you might as well just whistle up a rope. It don't work.
Okay.
So you, you might want to consider something like hydrogen peroxide or some of those that will have a longer period.
We are.
You need to check your force main detention times because if you go and do that and you lose your air in the time, in the pipe, when it dumps in that station, it's gonna be horrible.
So you're just, you're in the hydrogen peroxide.
You can feed hydrogen peroxide.
You're saying less than three hours?
Do what?
Let, the time needs to be less than three hours?
You want it two to three hours max in that pipe.
Okay.
If you can get it out of the station, through the pipe and into the next station, in less that, then you've not, the hydrogen sulfide hadn't built back up.
So it's almost a sequencing.
I would say that we're minutes.
Do what?
I would say that we're in the minutes for those.
One of the other things too that Bill thought to do was test the, you'll have to give details on the specifics.
The H two S.
The H two S and we do know the two times a day that, you know, and those two times a day correlate with the complaints that we get from the resident. So we know people are getting ready to go to work and then when they get home from work.
The evening is the worst.
And it's normally, we're walking in the afternoons and typically in the, in the mornings.
But this is, you know, we're talking four substations to that master station that, you know, we have a five person utility crew right now that we're trying to, on top of everything else, work on this project.
Does that include the station over in the villages?
Yes, it will.
Okay, that's one of them.
That's one of them that will, yeah.
So we're looking at all the stations.
Yes.
So the, the air will also help to clean the stations and break the grease up.
Now, do we do normal maintenance on that
We, we.
aeration or odor control system?
No, those can, that, that one and the Girl Scout system are leased and.
Somebody doing maintenance on?
Evoqua comes in, supposed to check them monthly. So I, we've engaged a contractor with a unit that uses radicals to kind of make hydrogen peroxide to attack the H two S. We're still awaiting that quote so we can prepare for budgeting for the future. I've also engaged Evoqua for a permanent solution to get us out of the lease that we're in. And I feel like the Stony Brook model will give us a better ability to plan for the Gateway Greens lift stations that go to Girl Scout because they're the same scenario.
When we discharge out of Doug's primary station, which is there right along the road, when you go in on the right, when we discharge out of that, that goes out and it picks up the Prado Pestoia pump station, bringing in all that flow also. Then it goes all the way down and it's in that force main to where it picks up the Hidden Links pump station.
Right.
And it picks up the Church pump station and then it goes down, makes a turn and comes all the way out here to the treatment plant.
Correct.
What's the time in the pipe that all that sewage is in there, one? And issue two is when the pump shuts off, how much of that sewage comes back into the wet well? Or we have a check valve.
We have check valves in every, we have check.
And they're working.
We have check valves in every wet well, yes.
So they can't, it can't come back? It stays in that pipe?
So. I mean, there, there is some that comes back, but it's minimal.
But all of that flow going up all the way to the wastewater treatment plant, it's pumped into a single line. It's not pumped and repumped into another wet well?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yeah, single line.
So we get cleaner, fresher sewage as we go closer to the treatment plant?
We're supposed to be.
Last thing, have, has the treatment plant complained about any odors coming out of that force main?
No, and I've engaged with them as well on the aeration project, just so that they're aware of it and to make sure that we don't do anything that's gonna affect their operation.
Back to probably internal to Stony Brook.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other questions to the?
Well, I want to know what's going on with the meter replacement pilot, whether, whether we're on, yeah, I saw that. I was just asking, are there, all the pilots are now running?
No.
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 So the box replacement is what is occurring right now. Ro Haley is wrapping up Gateway Greens. We hit some snags last week. Staff has been inundated. But the box replacement is nearing completion. We, like Steven mentioned earlier, we did just get approval from SRF for our, on the request for inclusion yesterday for the meter replacement project. So now that we got the green light, we're finalizing the RFP to put it out to get, to get actual meter vendors in, to come and bid and you will, you all will select.
So that'll be a September, October one.
Yes, yeah.
But the boxes are.
Almost.
Highwoods complete. Highwoods complete.
Almost complete.
They're having some real troubles with oak trees.
We save Gateway Greens last for a reason.
Yeah.
But it's giving us the full picture of what we're going to experience.
Which one is Gateway Greens? Bogany Run?
Yeah, Mahogany.
Should have known, Bogany Gate.
We had.
Mahogany Run and Callaway Greens.
Roots this big, this big. And I mean, you don't go in there with an axe like they were doing and try to chop them. I mean, it, it was a joke. It was a joke. They really need chainsaws badly, but they don't have any.
They, they do have a cut saw with a, like a skill saw. Skill saw blade on it.
Anything else for Mr. Shaw?
You going to report on the fiasco over here in Fairway Lakes?
I'd rather not.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So it's, we do have a schedule for tomorrow.
Yeah, well, it'll be repaired tomorrow.
Yeah.
Will be, this will be worked on tomorrow.
Yeah.
I don't know that it'll be done in one day.
We're, we're starting the repair tomorrow and we will get more answers as to if anything else needs to be completed.
What time they go start?
They're supposed to be here first thing in the morning.
Okay.
So back to the metering project, how soon is that going to be completed now?
The pilot?
The pilot, so that we can start to get results.
Is, is Callaway Greens the last road to?
Callaway Greens.
They have started, yeah.
They have started.
Oh, they did start today?
They started this week.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the answer to.
So maybe the end of September?
We have to bid out the actual meters themselves, which again, we should have that in the coming weeks. To put it out on the street, it'll be advertised for 30 days. You all will have to approve the three vendors that we choose, that the selection advisory committee chooses. So I'm hoping in-ground, starting our testing period by the, by November, December.
I would say within.
Certainly by January.
Within, within two weeks, the meter boxes will all be completed.
Two weeks?
With the utility building, where are we moving equipment and stuff for construction?
So I can answer.
Wherever we can fit it.
So part of, part of the RFP for full deployment, not necessarily for the pilot, for full deployment, the selected vendor would be responsible for the storage and, and of, of all of the equipment. Now at your next meeting, we're going to be asking for the purchase of the meter boxes because we can get a better deal if we direct purchase those. And so we're working with Ferguson either on, most likely staggering the delivery schedule. That way we're not 8,000 boxes or however many boxes here in the yard.
Is, is this a piggyback or is this direct, separate purchase us?
Separate, yeah.
One last, just because I don't remember. How many pilots are we doing in each?
Three.
How many hundreds? A hundred or 150 or how many?
105?
It was like 105. Yeah, so each, each.
Yeah, 100 different companies in each of the.
Three, three companies, 100 meters each.
Well, each have 100 meters, yeah. And also we included a few larger meters. Couple on the wells, a couple on irrigation above ground, just to get a comparable.
A year from now, we'll shoot up some results from those.
Six, yeah, nine months probably.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill.
I can't remember who was, if he's still here, when he was talking about, you know, building additional holding ponds. But.
That's the gentleman in your community. The gentleman that was in your community.
Want to build a holding pond over here in.
Yeah, you know, part of, you know, that, I don't, I don't think he was speaking to you. He was thinking about retention as opposed to displacement. Because that goes with the FPL easement.
He's got a point, that's exactly right. The FPL easement that we're talking about using for dumping the water is right along the line of what he's doing to avoid doing some of the way he was going to do it, which is going to cost a lot of money.
Yeah.
So that'll give us an option when we get it done.
Yeah, yeah. So if you happen to run across him, you might want to just mention.
I didn't even know him.
Well, I think he, it sounded like he's trying to get the water off the roads.
Yeah.
Right. So.
He wants auxiliary retention.
Well, he's, he's seeing the obvious benefit.
Yeah.
Every time we lower that water level, get it down below the weir, we can buy these big storms. Now, when we are at the weirs or having above, you're dead. Because that's the way it was designed. It's designed to go in the roads.
I don't think this falls under you, but I've also heard from quite a few people that do a lot of fishing in the community that over the past year, almost two years, that the number of fish have dropped significantly. I don't know if we test that or if.
We saw fish today over in the pond that, you know, not, not the big ones.
In Pelican, we have a budget item. Doug, in Pelican, we have a budget item, we buy fish every year. We buy two types. We buy game fish, we buy sterile carp. Sterile carp take a couple.
And I know what we've seen and what they've also said is the, they're seeing a, an increase in the.
Fish looking thing?
Evasive?
Yeah, that one.
The invasive fish, the.
Right, we, we still get that.
You know, the only reason I'm asking, not because, so people can catch more fish, but there is a benefit of those. And I just wonder if we test that or.
We do stock. I know Elle was, I think Elle and Daniel.
She won't start her budget this year. Yeah, that's what I was going to say, we, we added that in the budget following.
What's the total number of basins we have?
But we, we have a $10,000 budget, I think, and we, I think we utilized most of it already at him.
You got a stock hole, Pelican, we got three basins through stock hole.
Yeah, so we only had the funds to stock two ponds at him the park.
But the point is, if you're stocking and your invasive species are at a high level, because I'm, I'm sure we stock with juvenile.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you're dumping juveniles in and all the, your invasive fish are just eating them. So they're not even getting to maturity.
That's an Elle question, but I know this pond 90, it's nothing but invasive.
And when you catch an invasive, you don't put it back.
You're not supposed to.
Our fishermen know and they don't.
I actually had someone say, why are all, why are there all these dead, you know, fish on, like, because you're not supposed to put them back in? Like, oh, I didn't realize it. And especially a lot of people from up north, they just don't.
Anything else for monthly reports?
Nope. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill?
See you tomorrow, Bill.
And the next day after that.
I'm going to be the sidewalk superintendent tomorrow.
District at 30.
I want to see this mess.
Good evening.
Hello.
Awesome.
I'll do part and Zach will do part, that's okay. On the first part, deeds of the district, we received an updated list and proposed documents from Lenar US Home, Charles Mann's Law Firm. And we're fine with all of them except for a couple of comments, so we're waiting for response back so we can wrap all that up. I'd like to bring everything to the board meeting of September 5th for an acceptance by our resolution so we could wrap up a bunch of straggler parcels in, in Gateway and also in Pelican Reserve. The cap improvement, let's jump down to the district infrastructure easement ownership identification. There were a bunch of areas identified as different monuments or islands in various communities. And we're going through those with Will Cronin of Passarella to identify the easiest ways to prepare the graphics at the least expense, but still provide enough detail for the landscape easements for those. And that's a work in progress and that will be finalized by that deadline of 9/19.
9/15, okay.
Yeah. Zach, you want to address Janopi?
Yes, we keep being told by Janopi's council that they are still reviewing. Most recently on August 5th, we were told that the Janopi CEO is out of the country and not able to provide feedback. And as soon as, as soon as they know something, they will get back to us immediately. So we don't, we don't have an update other than we're waiting on.
It's Brazil.
Council review.
Yeah, and it's, it's a district, it's an IT agreement with the vendor.
It's the IT agreement.
Yeah, they're the IT vendor for the district. So it's important to get that in place and that's been very frustrating for all of us.
Tony, are we in a position where we should be looking at alternatives?
No.
I think you're a good provider. I think that's what Chelsea would say. You're a good provider.
We're happy with our service. It was when we had that incident a year ago that quickly realized that we don't have any contractual obligations to hold them accountable. Good, bad or indifferent, so we've been working back and forth on trying to get it queued up at, at least for next fiscal year to have something start.
So we don't need to be looking at alternatives?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
The FPL consent to use, we're still waiting for the final review from FPL and comments. We've, they provided some concessions, I've identified those before. And so hopefully what we've, we've kind of gone back and forth. Hopefully we'll get an answer soon. Chelsea, I've not heard anything from Cameron or Penny in a while. Have you on that?
Nope.
And so I'll just, I'll just bug them again. I know they were happy for us to be cooperative on the laydown agreement, but part of the deal that Chelsea sort of cut with them was they need to accelerate this. So they, we, I'll remind them of their deal, Chelsea, how does that sound?
Yeah.
Okay. Board policies and procedures. Chelsea and I just need to get with Flavi and talk about that. So hopefully we can arrange that between now and the September 5th meeting so we have some free time, even with everything else going on.
Tony, one question.
Just let me know, Antoni, pretty.
Okay.
The Pelican Reserve Tree Line and Colonial signed parcel. With the action that was taken by P-PAC in their last meeting, and it'll be coming for this board and our, I hope our next meeting, to pay off those bonds, we can now re-initiate that, getting rid of those parcels.
Yes, sir.
Vote on that?
I know.
Yep, next meeting.
But I'm just giving them the heads up that that may be coming forward, okay? He didn't say it.
I'm sorry about that. The, the issue, just get down to Stony Brook Roads and Streets. The, based upon a telephone call I had with the attorney and the Attorney General's Office in the opinion section, I was told to expect it by the end of this month. So that's, that's all that I was able to elicit and hopefully we will get the answer by the end of the month. The, the ability, we've talked about that memorandum and that was pulled, repealed chapter six, that was addressed today. The Pelican Reserve, PPCA agreement, district funds, we have correspondence back and forth from our auditor to them. And Chelsea, we need to set a date when this kind of come back to the board, but we've not finalized that yet.
Are we close?
I'd say no, but Chelsea?
I'm going to be the optimist and say, I hope so.
Now I'll be.
Is there another meeting set?
We're working on it, yes. We have an internal follow-up and then we're going to be responding to them and then hopefully get an in-person meeting set and get it resolved. Their, this year starts December, so we're hoping to get it done before then.
And Tony, did, at the last meeting, you may have said this, but I didn't hear you. The last meeting, I think you said that the AG's decision should be forthcoming?
You just said next month.
You just said.
Yeah, the last, the last word I had in a telephone conversation with the attorney in the opinions section, not, not the ultimate boss, but the attorney in the opinion section is, I should expect it, we should expect it by the end of this month.
Okay, thank you. I didn't hear.
That's, that's the most optimistic statement I've heard from them in the whole time, quite frankly.
Thank you.
Pelican Reserve Irrigation Agreement, we received, I mentioned that the draft irrigation agreement. We've had a teams meeting for the staff and we're setting up a group meeting for no later than hopefully September 5th. It's, I think it's more complicated than what was outlined in the draft agreement we received. So I think the first step would be to have that meeting with all the parties.
Staff and I are going tomorrow to look at the pump house itself with Jim Torb.
Okay, committee member meetings, protocol. I did follow up on a telephone call with Marty and he and I had a good conversation. And as a result of that, got with Chelsea and staff to provide sort of a modified notice for the committees and subcommittees as to who may participate and then what happens. Because then if there are two P-PAC committee members present at a subcommittee meeting and they interact, then minutes need to be taken and approved by P-PAC as to that segment, same if board members attend. So that's a new notice that's gone out.
If you'll notice real quick, on the bottom of the agendas, you'll see that Georgia's already made the edits to that. So across all agendas moving forward, that tiny font will be there for notice.
The memorandum regarding practices, the gatehouse, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Tony.
Oh, the memorandum regarding practices, the gatehouses, I finished that up and sent that to Chelsea. It's with regards to the nature of the memorandum, since it involves access, control or security plans, formulas, reports, processes. In our opinion, it's confidential and exempt under the public records law. And then what we're contemplating is distributing that on a confidential exempt basis and have a closed-door session to discuss that because the nature of that question is one that, again, implicates the district's access control procedures. So we'll be working with Chelsea to set that up with the various committees and the board. Monument and signage at State Road 82 in Gateway. Chelsea, do you have anything more from Stony Brook on that or Flavia?
No, last, they, last I spoke with JT, he was inquiring why they had to pay for it. And I said, that's an agreement that we all made while you guys had your board, your HA meeting while simultaneously with ours workshop. And Chelsea went and gave them two options, right?
I have one quote.
One quote. And I told JT, I said, just go back out there and if you find somebody cheaper, do it, but it's, it's your responsibility. So we're waiting on them.
Yeah, I've heard nothing more either, so I'll just wait and see what happens.
There was, one of the letters had fallen off and staff did repair that in the last month. But, you know, we're, we're operating as if we're going to be accepting it, waiting on them. But again, it's technically, it's theirs until we.
We should put a timeline. Let's, let's.
I agree. That if we don't hear back with the sketch and legal by time and date certain, that we are ceasing maintenance and responsibilities of.
I'll say 30 days.
I can send that notice tomorrow.
They've had it for, they've had a while.
They already, they already have a vendor and everything, he actually went out as well and he just.
Well, maybe, maybe the first comeback is, when can we expect a decision? And then if it's, they can't give it to us or if it's, you know, a long end, then we need it within 30, 60 days.
I would say by the end of the fiscal year, at a minimum.
Yeah.
45 days.
45 days.
And I was going to continue maintaining.
45 days.
I would say through that, that promised date. And if we don't hear back from them by then, we stop, we just, we stop on September 30.
Yeah, and I think Flavi mentioned minor, minor repairs, not major during that period of time.
Yes.
The Daniels Parkway, follow up with the attorney for the developer. And they're working on a recent middle to the district, but not give a timeframe. And I don't know where they will propose the, whether they'll come back with irrigation wells or some other routes. But we're waiting for that to settle. The opinions, connection fees, I have it drafted up and not finalized, so I'll get that to Chelsea next week so we can wrap that part up. And same on the utilities rules, the major changes that Leslie has suggested. Plus I have a telephone call with Tony Hairston from Raftellis next week. Talked about some issues on definitions, whether or not the definitions in certain aspects need to be, can be maintained or revised, such as availability fee, administrative fee and connection fee as to the definitions. Because apparently there have been some questions and issues and we've had some initial conversations, but I want to talk with Tony first before I talk to Chelsea about a recommendation to the board. Any other questions?
Tony?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Tony, we've, we've talked a lot on this chapter six. If we have a chapter six, I'm assuming we have a 1, 2, 3, 4 and 5. Anybody seen it? Anybody seen them?
We have them.
We have them now? Can we get them out to all the boards so we know what they are?
We, books are about this thick and I have no idea. I've gone back through the resolutions to see as they've been amended over time, but I have no codified version of the.
Tony, do you have that stuff?
What I did, I sent to Chelsea a number by email, a number of electronic versions I have of indexes to various rules and dates and the rules. And I'll keep digging for, make sure I have more and I have them all.
And Tony, that's what we thought. And Tony, that's what we thought, we weren't sure if those were the final, most up-to-date ones, we had to go back and do some homework on.
I mean, I don't even know what they talk about.
Primary manuals, one. Utility rules is one, which that's included in the rules. I have a list of, I have a list.
I think everybody should see them.
Yeah.
There, there was a, there was a transportation charge rule and that got repealed. There was a, there was a parks and recreation rule, I think, that got repealed when they were gonna do the bond validation, so yeah, there are a number of them.
I took a page document of, I went back through our resolutions to see when any amendments were made, so I can send that to you so you can have an idea of the general.
Okay.
Yeah, what I received were a lot of them were from prior district managers that sent them to me and sometimes they were not in any particular order or systematic, systematic filing process, quite frankly.
Which is working on going back and making sure all the resolutions.
Well, my thought was, do they, do any of them need to be updated?
Well, that's part of it, but Georgia's going back and looking at all of our district resolutions and making sure all exhibits are attached, getting those in MuniCode so you guys can search them, she's going backwards in time. And then once those are in there, we, I already have the references and the dates and the years and the resolutions of when those rules were amended, so compiling those and getting those to MuniCode to codify it, so we're getting there, it just takes some time.
Hi, anything else for Tony? No? Thank you, Tony. Zach, you?
Thank you.
All right. Future board business, do you wanna go, I think we just, if anybody has any questions and just go with you. Do you have anything, Carol?
No, but just a reminder, I will not be here the first meeting in October.
Okay, thank you. Doug?
No.
Ed?
No.
Bob?
I will not be here the first and second meeting of September. The first meeting, September 5th, I will not be here.
I was gonna say, not gonna be here on September 19th.
So do you wanna cancel?
September 5th, I will not be here.
Do you wanna cancel the workshop since I don't have anything scheduled for that?
September 5th workshop.
Unless you have, unless you wanna add something to it.
If you would have the attorney's opinion.
In two weeks? Not in a week?
A week?
No, I need a week to be published for the board. Actually, we have two weeks.
Wait, 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 I'm talking about the attorney we're gonna hire to do this deal. We don't, we don't have to do, what are we doing, uh, advertisement?
Engagement letter. Not for the board meeting, she's talking for a workshop topic.
What I was trying to say is that we can take and have, Doug was talking about having a meeting before, that would be an appropriate meeting.
Let's just keep it, we can cancel it.
Keep it open.
We can cancel before.
Cancel the workshop and keep the meeting?
No.
No, no.
Keep it as it is.
Keep it in place.
If we change, we may change your mind later.
We don't need it, we don't need it.
I don't have any topics queued up, so that's what I'm asking.
For September 5th.
For the September 5th workshop.
The only thing I can think of would be, is if he can get that ruling, we need to be able to discuss that before that 19th meeting.
All right, if I can get it done, if I can find somebody and they can review everything and provide an opinion by the 29th, I will get it posted, otherwise we'll cancel.
We 86 it, yep.
Okay.
Cool?
Cool.
Okay.
Nothing else, Bob?
For agenda matter.
Yes, no, okay. So the next item, we'll probably hearing, we wanna take a five-minute break?
Okay, wait, 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 wait. The first.
This is a time certain.
Yeah, thirty minutes then.
Yep.
Okay.
This supposed to start about 3:00?
Yep.
The rates, the first one.
I have a question about our budget. Is this the appropriate time to do it or do I need to wait for the whatever?
It would, it would be appropriate to do it during the public hearing.
Okay.
So let's go ahead and take a half an hour?
Yep, 5:30.
Okay. Version five, the one we've got's version four in the book. Are we gonna get a version five printout?
We can, you can take the next thirty minutes in front.
Yep, can we get a new version so we can look at it? And then the other issue was, was the assessment role. I did, I went through it, but what I was trying to say is, I couldn't find, uh, Arborwood. I couldn't find Arborwood in that assessment. Now, keep in mind, that thing's gotta be three or four hundred pages.
Oh, yeah.
I went through it scrolling and I skipped through all of Pelican and I skipped through all of Gateway thinking that it wouldn't be in either one of those, that it would be a standalone either at the beginning or at the end. It wasn't either. I couldn't find it.
Okay.
Couldn't we do supervisor comments now, just so we don't lose a half an hour and do it later?
Yeah, let's do that.
I mean, it's just.
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either. Gotta kill a half an hour.
So you're canceling, you're taking a break then, because Tony, it's like the audio's still on, I said we're holding on the break.
Okay, well, we're holding on the break then. So I'll start with Carol, supervisor comments?
Okay, um, I think at the last meeting, I, I asked that staff could, um, consult with some, uh, real estate, uh, real estate people in the area to ask if there's any possibility of any building that we could buy or whatever. Have you had a chance to do that or do you need more time?
You wanna take it or you want me to?
Me?
No.
I don't have anything about it.
So I had reached out to Denny Grimes, we were waiting to hear back from them. In the meantime, um, I believe Ed reached out, has a good relationship, established a relationship with Morgan at Denny Grimes, um, and there is nothing to their knowledge with the minimum requirements that we've set for a building.
Not only the building.
Parking.
Parking.
Parking was a killer.
Yeah.
Parking was a killer.
Off on the gateway.
And then the. Well, like, Carol, what?
Just that conversation, I mean, if we can buy a building, a lot cheaper to put it to parking than go to the new add-on. If the parking is the killer, what's the cost of a parking lot versus building all?
That's the problem.
There's no building.
Well, I, okay, what I heard was, there wasn't a problem with the building so much, but the parking.
Parking, parking was a killer because it, you didn't have built, you could find a building, but you couldn't find a place to park.
Or ad parking.
Or ad parking, it's, you were just boxed.
Well, they're different, different kind of things, okay, but there's, there's no chance to add, to buy a building, like if Gartner's leaving or part of it, and then add some parking.
You'd have to get in the business of subletting if you do that, and I don't know that that's in our charters to be doing that.
Well, I wasn't meant to buy Gartner, I'm just saying that's a.
But I mean, big buildings, big, there's a couple of big buildings.
I, I saw one building, but it, and then the parking was just, that would not, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That's it?
No, my other question deals with the budgets, I'll just wait. Thank you.
I, I just have kind of one item. And I'm sure staff is probably doing this, but I think we need to really look at our RFI, RFP documentation. It just seems like it's getting really big and thick and there's opportunities for staff to look at that documentation along with, if we're partnering with Tetra Tech during those, because I deal with RFPs all the time and the thicker and deeper they go, the more difficult it is to get people to fill them out appropriately and core information gets lost in large documents. So I would just ask for staff to continue to look at our RFP process, especially, specifically the documentation, for us to try to simplify whenever possible, um, because again, I'm just an advocate of.
The board tasks Tony to do so and he's working on that.
We're basically thirty pages, thirty pages of documents.
And that's a lame one.
Thirty, yeah, and that's what, Bob, we, we've had other discussions about that, is it, first of all, it, it discourages bidders and the second thing is, it increases costs. These guys gotta spend time putting all this crap together. We need to go in that thing with a paring knife and start getting it cut back.
We saw a fifty percent increase in a simple on-bay.
And simplifying doesn't mean you eliminate requirements.
Absolutely not.
But there is always opportunity to streamline these documents and I've been a part of putting together very complex, thick doc, thick documents because I felt like we'd need to be all inclusive to add all this stuff and I've seen more negatives to that than by trying to stay leaner, focus on core, you know, those types of things. So just bring it aware, I think you said Tony's.
Tony's supposed to be working.
But I would say, having legal, having legal drive that, I don't know is the exact approach, um, because of course you want legal to review it, but as far as, you know, business requirements or critical requirements, that probably needs to come from staff and from engineering, depending on what type of RFP you're, you're looking at. So I would say it should be a collective.
We have, we have a couple of different forms. We have an ITQ, which is exactly, it's an invitation to quote, which is a very simplified version of the bid form, I think it's like three pages, um, that Tony's reviewing. And then we have our, our formal bids that we have, the RFP, the RFQ and ITB. And those are all, a lot of those are state regulated, um, with certain forms that we have to provide, but the ITQ is the simple form that we're trying to move to on minor maintenance.
I was gonna say, are they driven by the dollar value?
Yeah, project type, if it's a project or maintenance and dollar value.
So if we keep it under a quarter million, it ought to be pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Versus.
And we, you know, we don't wanna open ourselves.
Construction or maintenance or.
We've had problems with.
You've gotta cover bases.
We just talked about this, I think it's three fifty and thirty thousand.
You've gotta cover bases.
Yeah.
But some of this stuff that we've got in ours is just superfluous bull. I mean, it's ridiculous, like a requirement that all the employees have to wear the same colored shirts.
Shirts.
I mean, good God. You go to the labor hall, you'd be lucky if the guy's got a shirt, let alone telling me what color he has to wear.
Or work.
Those type of things we don't need.
Yeah, so just a recommendation, let's just continue to look at the, uh, our documentation process.
Yep.
That's all that.
Bob?
Okay, I had a, uh, did everybody get a copy of the motion? I was gonna make a motion. With respect to Section Six because it hasn't been repealed yet. For the specialized facility and services, I wanted to change one line. You don't, they don't have that?
Are you mail it to them?
Yeah, we've seen it.
Okay, all right. So what it basically says, we go from, quote, facilities or services is predicated upon certain properties within the district not being directly internally connected to Gateway Boulevard and Griffith. Just like to change that, adding a couple of words, or Commerce Lake Drive. If that was in.
Let me finish.
Yeah, let me finish, I know you're. But if that was in there, then Arborwood no longer be in consideration for not being connected. Because you can't get to Arborwood if you don't go by Commerce Lake Drive.
Okay, so that's what was the motion that you would have liked to do if you were able to do, because you cannot do it because we're missing the requirements to be able to do that, right, Zach?
He's got the rule made.
Okay.
Wait, wait, what, okay, tell me why.
You are not able to make that motion because you have to follow the rule process that Tony explained to us and Zach can probably better explain again to us.
Yeah, is this different? Well, it's not, not amending, I'm just.
It is amending.
It is amending.
Let's, Zach, let's, Zach explain to you.
Because you made a motion to change six and that's in process.
Bob at the time. Hey, Bob, can I have that?
Sure.
Bob at the time, when we did it, if you recall, Tony said, whether you repeal or you amend, you have to go through the process.
Yes, this, this appears to be a rule amendment, so it's the same, it's the process that's in place, which is the repeal process, or, I mean, you could go, this is the other option, you could amend the rule. At a, at a board level, this policy decision can be made, but the procedure doesn't change.
What did you just tell me?
What I just told you is.
Did we consider this or not?
You have to have a public hearing.
So today you voted to set a public hearing on the repeal process. You, this would similarly need a statement of regulatory costs, it would need to go to a public hearing in the same fashion.
Well, I would think that's regulatory costs, I doubt it.
I'm, I'm sure they are very similar, but it needs to be tailored to it.
More detail for an amendment than for a repeal, a lot more detail. But the thing is though, just talking about it, I, I don't know where you're getting that, including Commerce Lakes, that doesn't impact Arborwood at all.
Can't get into Arborwood without going to Commerce Lakes, it's connected.
No, your road is not connected to.
I'm not talking about my road, I'm only talking about.
Well, currently.
Currently. Current.
Currently, and Arborwood is not connected either. And it, and.
But it would be if Commerce Lakes Drive was considered, because the difference, the fundamental difference in my little brain is, you can't get to Gateway at a Pelican or C5 without going to ten other miles worth of roads. But Arborwood is uniquely different because you can't get into Arborwood without crossing that district road, Commerce Lakes.
But, but we're going back to the, I, that would be great if you could make that motion, but we can't, so I don't think discussion of that helps us in any way.
Okay, but it could be in consideration.
It could be in consideration.
Okay, that's all.
Absolutely.
Then that's achieved.
As long, as long as we follow the requirements, yes.
Then, then I'm okay with that and we'll throw that to the attorney to include it in all of our other discussions when we discuss it.
Okay, anything else? No? All right, so then let's take.
Twenty minutes.
We'll get some snacks, some.
So it is 5:31 and I would like, and I will make a motion to open the public hearing to consider the adoption of an amendment to Schedule A of the Chapter 100II rules of the district as it relates to potable water rates effective October 1st to 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Do you want me to ask, like, literally read all this?
Oh, it was just, it was just an outline to provide guidance for the hearing.
All right, district manager, do we have all the requirements and legal notifications for the hearing?
Yes, we do.
In the record, including a copy of what was, including a copy of the ad that was in the paper and the affidavit of posting in the paper and the affidavit of regarding the utility bills.
Yes, we do.
Will you please add those to the record? Did staff review, uh, and do they have any comments or objections?
I did not receive any as, as of today's date.
All right, please add to the record. The procedure, the procedure we're going to follow is, to follow is the staff is going to present, then the public comment will be, will be received. After the public comment, the public hearing will be closed and the board will then discuss and take a vote. All right, I'm gonna leave this in there.
Oh, that's budget, sorry. Ultimately, the proposed rates are, as you recall, a couple of months ago, we went through with Raftellus to address, uh, the proposed capital projects that we have forthcoming, more specifically the full deployment meter replacement project, which, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, that we did receive SRF approval for a little over thirteen million dollars. We're gonna be working through that, but we had to show with SRF that we had sufficient funds to pay back that loan. As such, this increase of rates, as recommended by Raftellus, who was our rate consultant, will cover us for those capital projects moving forward.
All right, does anybody have? Any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Looking for a motion?
Back to the room.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve, it'll have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You need to open for public comment?
Yes, we, was, so was there any public comment signed up for?
Uh, no, we did not have any signed up for public comment.
Nobody on?
No.
Does anyone in the room wish to comment?
All right. No. All right. Skip that in there.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and I guess just for record clarity, on the, on the opening of the public hearing at the beginning, Ed made a motion to open the public hearing.
Yes.
Obviously, can we get just corrective second and a vote on that?
So we have a motion by Ed to open the public hearing, a second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess the next public hearing starts at six o'clock.
Do they need to close this public hearing?
Yes.
Be a motion?
So we'll have a motion to close the public hearing, we have a second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we will wait until six o'clock for the next public hearing?
Are you kidding?
All right, it is six o'clock and I will make a motion to open the public hearing and for consideration of the adoption of the FY 2025 budget.
I'll make that motion, are you making it?
I made it.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second?
And the vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
District Manager, do we have all the, all the required legal notifications for this hearing, including a copy of the ad that was filed in the paper, and the affidavit of posting in the paper, and a copy of the mailer, and the affidavit regarding the mailing?
Yes, we do. And we also have a revised mailer that were, that was mailed out to a specific number of addresses that had an error calculation on the debt service assessment that we also have an affidavit for as well. Courtesy notice.
Thank you, ma'am. Did staff receive any comments or objections?
Yes.
I have one public comment for someone in person. I have one that I need to read into the record.
Okay, so let's- Well, that's what this is.
Yeah, it's just opening for public comment.
So let's go ahead and open the public comment. You, you want to call the first one?
Yeah, we only have one in person. First up is Nancy Straw. A reminder that you have three minutes. Please state your name. I won't start it till after you tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Nancy Straw, and I live in Pelican Preserve. And I'm here to just talk about a parcel that we have within Pelican Preserve that's an RV lot. We took possession of that from the developer in November of 2023, and it wasn't recorded until early 2024. But in the budget that I saw online, we never got a notice, but I saw in the budget online that there's an assessment against that parcel for $1,821.43. And we'd like that to be reviewed because we don't believe that we owe that. I did send it in by email, and here are the documents again as well that I'll give to Laura.
Thank you, Nancy.
I can address that, actually. Yep, if you look on the screen here under, on line 44 that I have highlighted this loan right here, you can see that it is $0. What happened is the, we pull all of our records in January from the tax assessor's office. The transaction didn't happen until February, so that was why it was not, our, our records didn't capture that because it happened after we pulled our information from the tax assessor.
So it was rectified?
It is rectified. It shows $0.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Nancy.
And then I have one to read into the record. It's from Glenn and Lisa Button. Dear Ms. O'Reilly and GSCDD Board, we have received your notice of public hearing dated July 10th, 2024, and submit our objection to the proposed increase of annual assessments and special assessments debt service identified within. We request that the Board of Directors carefully look at the proposed budget and postpone and/or cancel projects and/or activities that are not absolutely essential for the safety and security of Gateway. We believe the GSCDD Board should be able to manage the budget without a constant increase, which has averaged over 17% yearly since 2011 for single-family units. There have been several times when Lee County took into consideration the economy and withheld increases. Gateway should be doing the same thing during these three and a half years of consistent inflation caused by reckless spending by the U.S. government. In your July 10th notice, you indicate the amount of $439,000 as a total net increase for three listed items in Gateway Area 1 and 2. For example, expenses associated with landscape services, parks and recreation, and waterway management. The FY 2025 budget assessment chart on the Gateway website shows the Lake Bank at $145.69, and Series 2023 bond at $157.32 for single-family units. And you list in this notice the debt service of $303.01, which appears to be the total of those two items. However, we feel that the Lake Bank Restoration Bond should be set in stone amortization schedule, and jumping from $466,000 in FY 2021 to $765,000 in FY 2025 is almost $300,000, which deserves further scrutiny. We believe the listed activities are being assigned dollar amounts haphazardly. Furthermore, the Debt Service Fund 205, Lake Bank Restoration Bond, has been fluctuating like the tide. Looking at the 2021 bond outstanding balance is just over 8.1 million. FY 2022 and FY 2023 show just over 10.5 million. FY 2024 jumps to over 14.2 million, and FY 2025 show over 11.6 million, a decrease from FY 2024, but still an increase from FY 2021. We believe the Lake Bank Restoration Bond needs a thorough review. We request to stop any non-critical restoration and/or new projects until the board figures out how to best manage the Debt Service Fund 205 and the Series 2023 bond so that we may manage the increased costs for home and auto insurance and maintenance, healthcare, utilities, goods and services critical to live and work. Sincerely, Glenn and Lisa Button.
Where do they live?
They live in Country Day Circle.
Dennis Preserve.
Oh, Daniels.
So first, I just want to clarify one thing. They reference the Lake Bank Restoration Fund as a bond. It is not a bond. It is a loan. And then as we do work on the lake banks, we get money from the state to do those, it's going to go up. And then as we pay the loans off, it goes down. So that's the reason for the fluctuation. So there wasn't a set payment. It's not like you can amortize it over a flat amount because it's not like our regular bonds where we took out X dollars. So we know for the next 20 years, this is what our payments are going to be.
Thank you, Laura. Anybody else?
And a subsidized rate.
Most over 0%, which is good, yes.
So we do have Stephen Blum on line to do a presentation of the FY, proposed FY 25 budget.
I see them.
Yes, good evening. So, and just kind of as a quick follow-up on that, when we do the slides here, I am happy to report that we did and were able to lower that lake bank. Just kind of as a quick follow-up on that. But let me go through my slides, and then when we get to that one, I can kind of show you what the new number is. Okay, so, moving on to the executive summary. Thank you. So, executive summary, no change in the total team count. Annual wages actually decreased by about $26,000. And again, this is an executive summary that's covering everything compared to your 2024 budget. The budget as a whole does include a wage increase there of about 4%. You can see on there your fun-by-fun look of your operating spending and a comparison against your amended 2024 budget. It's about a 29% increase, and you can see the bulk of that first starts with Enterprise Fund, and then Pelican Preserve Fund is next up there, followed by the General Fund. We'll go, you know, one by one through these, but you can see both for Gateway and Pelican Preserve there, the annual assessments, which includes the new Series 2023 bond, which obviously affects both Gateway Area 1 and 2, as well as Pelican Preserve. We'll cover that as well. Overall, when you look at the Gateway Area 1 and 2, multifamily's got about a 24% increase, a single family's got a 25% increase. Pelican Preserve, single family's 3%, and then multifamily is 2.5%. Now, the, you know, the annual assessment numbers there, that is annual. I mean, that's the full amount all in. If you go to the next chart there, now you can kind of see the breakdown. And, you know, I'm happy to report there, because with the Lake Bank loans, we were able to establish the reserve fund, we didn't need, we did not need to have to assess the extra contingency amount that was in the preliminary budget. So the dollar amount that you see there, $127.88 under the Lake Bay column, is the same amount as this year. So we're, you know, that's, that's always good to keep that the same. You can see the General Funds, Stony Brook, Town Center, and now the new column for Series 2023. Fiscal year 2025 is going to be the first year for that bond. It's not the first payment. The first payments were made using capitalized interest from the issuance of the bond. This obviously will be the first year that the residents are going to be impacted by that particular bond, and you could see the per-unit amount there. The next slide there shows the same, something very similar for Pelican Preserve, now including their portion of Series 2023, as well as the ONM. Bottom part of that chart, you can also see the breakdown, again, showing the difference in what the annual amount is per unit.
Excuse me, Stephen. That is, for Pelican, you have to add the 2013 bond payment onto that, correct?
For, for the parcels that have to pay that. And that's always been, when we do these charts, one of the things that makes it interesting.
Pelican.
I'm sorry?
From old Pelican.
Yeah, I mean, yep, that's a good way of putting it. Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because it is not across the board. Whoever, within Pelican, that gets that particular bond would see that on their, their mail notice. And the, the budget pages, there's a separate budget page that shows the breakdown of the units and how that's calculated.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, so kind of, I'm moving forward here to the staffing plan. Again, you can see year-over-year, the change. And then you can also see through the different departments and what's changed. Again, not a whole significant amount of movement, but there was some movement as, you know, positions and stuff were realigned. Again, that, you know, overall, you're looking at a decrease in terms of the wages, and, but it does have, and, you know, dollar for dollar, it's less, but you do have a wage increase built into your budget right now. Throughout this presentation, and we've done this every year, we do the trending. So you can kind of see, you know, multiple years and where things have gone. Just looking at this, back in fiscal year 2020, total staff was about 24, and then you could kind of see, you know, where, where it's increased over time. Obviously, utility services with growth and stuff comes additional staff. Okay, moving on to the General Fund first. Overall, again, these are all overviews. Obviously, you'll have questions and different things you want to get into. With these slides, we like to just give you, you know, one more look at where the big picture is. And again, we're starting here with the General Fund. Gross assessments increasing by about a little bit under $400,000. And then what's included in that, some of the big-ticket items, there's a transfer to the Capital Project Fund. That's something we do every year. This year, with something new, we've got bond proceeds, as well as a carry forward to cover the additional amount on the admin building. We put in, based on the, the previous meeting's discussion on Arborwood, now a cash reserve. It's separate lines. If you look at the bottom of the General Fund budget, the details, you'll now see an $87,000 amount to cover, you know, that Arborwood discussion. And then finally, you can see the trend, you know, starting with 2020 and going all the way up. Of note, 2021, that second column there, that's when the new assessment methodology went into play. For those of you who don't, don't remember or weren't around, before that, both multifamily and single-family got the same amount, which obviously kind of lent it, lent itself to go, well, maybe we should look at that. And so 2021 is when kind of things were reshuffled. And now you can see where multifamily went, single-family went up, multifamily went down. And then from there, you can kind of see the, the growth and change each year for those particular categories. Okay, so where we are with spending, overall, an increase. But it's important to note, within that increase, is the admin building of about, you know, $511,000. So without that, obviously, it's, it's a much different look in the, of the General Fund. Again, I included some trend numbers here for you to kind of see where the numbers have been. The other thing I included that we always kind of look at, again, at a big-picture level, the changes, you know, kind of the big-picture changes. You can see landscape and services have gone up, Parks and Recs has gone up, operational admin went down. And again, this is all compared against the fiscal year 2024 amended budget, any changes that might have occurred during the year. Public safety went down, public works went up, and then waterway management services went up a little bit as well. You can see, I always try to put in some notes to give you a little bit of, of context to where some of those increases are. It's not every line. I mean, every line might have a plus or minus to it. I try and cover, at least in these slides, again, big-picture tick, big tickets for you, so you can see kind of, you know, where it, when it came or went. And then from there, we can obviously look at the individual budget pages. Okay, next up is Pelican Preserve. So overall, based on where it is right now, it's actually a decrease. No change in the, we just mentioned a little bit earlier, the Series 2013 bond. There's no change in that. This particular budget now includes a use of fund balance of $344,000. Overall, your expenditures have gone up, although I did build in here to show you that's not always everything going up. It is certain, some things don't change, some things actually decrease. The biggest thing you'll see here there is the, both the admin building and safety and security. The increase for safety and security is about $249,000. And then the admin building is obviously included in there as, as a one-off. But again, the admin building is being covered by capital reserves, so it's not like it's being compounded on top of your gross assessments. You can see at the bottom of that page, kind of the trend.
Stephen, just a question. The Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee voted at their last meeting to retire the 2013 bond. If that gets done before October 1st, I don't know if that's real or not. Can't be done by then? Okay, never mind.
No, it has to, it has to fall in line with the call dates. Just, Bob just says NFYI. And the other thing, you know, to mention is that, that is a separate fund that would handle that particular activity. It would be, have to be a transfer, as you know, from the Pelican Preserve reserves to handle that. And it won't, you know, it'd affect 2025. When it does take place, we will, we'll do a budget amendment to make sure that's, you know, notified, noticed in your budget.
Okay, thank you.
And again, there, there are your trends, looking at it, starting in 2021. Okay, next up, Stony Brook, increase very minor. I mean, just basically flat almost. But the per-unit amount is about $2.16. A net decrease in your, the expenditures there. Again, I showed kind of the, where that's coming from. Biggest ticket, big line on it there is reserves, a decrease in of about $226,000. Again, that's compared to the amended budget and to 2024 budget. As you remember, when we did 2024, we put some additional reserves in the budget that they later intended not to use. So that's the biggest reason there for the year-over-year change. Again, some other small increases and a couple other decreases that I've noted. And finally, the, again, the trend to show you, you know, fiscal year 2025, total expenditure is about $371,000. And then you can kind of see, you know, it's actually down. It's the lowest it's been in about five years.
I just want to clarify one thing, Stephen. Go back to that. So the reserve that decreased at $226,000, it wasn't that it was not intended to be used. It was because we were working with-
Yeah, the contract, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Sorry, yeah, better wording. Okay, utility fund. Okay, there. So, utility fund has some, has about $578,000, and you guys obviously just went through that in terms of additional utility billing revenue. You know, I won't go through the whole list of why that's so necessary. You guys went through that several times. But again, you know, the smallest, or not smallest, but one of the big pieces is you got to get your reserves back up, build up your reserves. And that's an important part of it, is obviously building up the, the revenue for that. Overall, we have a net crease, increase in expenses of about $642,000. You can see there, big line increases in water and wastewater purchases. You now have additional principal and interest payments for the state revolving loans that are flowing through the utility fund, and only, you know, that, those are just for the utility fund. You have a reserve program of about $400,000. Just to give you a point of reference, I put on there what it was this year. You know, so basically letting you know, $400,000, while it's still a big number, is actually less than it was last year, and it's probably, it probably is definitely less than you wanted to make it be in future years as you kind of build up more revenue. You certainly want to keep building up the money for your reserve program, you know, which covers maintenance. Loan proceeds are built into this budget of about $1.2 million, as well as some use of reserves and connection fees, and even some of the maintenance program revenue. Again, you can see the, the pieces of the admin building. As you've noticed, we talked a little bit about capital earlier. The admin building is all, is in all three of the major funds are contributing to that particular capital project. And then, again, you'll require about $2 million to cover projects within the, you know, that's deemed as a part of the utility fund and the utility system. Okay, so debt service funds, again, this is the first fiscal year 2025 where the, these two particular bonds will come into play now. You can see that's about, in total, about $975,000 in, in the PNI payments. We talked a little bit there already about the Series 2013, and then, you know, what's outstanding there, and then we'll get that, that paid off. And then if we go to the next slide, we can, again, take another quick look at the lake bank. So again, no increase, obviously no change in the per-unit amount. It's always based on what's outstanding. So as, as Laura mentioned, each year it fluctuates. Sometimes a loan will clear off, and then if no new loan has been added, then the payments will go down a little bit. You can look, actually see on the, the trend chart down there, that in fiscal year 2022, it was a little bit over $100. And then for one year and one year only, we were able to drop it down to $97.50, and then from there, it's, it's gone back up. So it'll, it'll never be, I mean, for years, you, maybe you'll have one or two years, but unless you, you know, stop doing projects or these loans clear out, which most of them have 10, 15 more years left, the amounts will pretty much be going up. And again, that reserve, the $665,000, stays in that fund, has to be, has to stay in there for a lake bank. But that is what's allowing the district not to have to assess every year. It was, it was just part, one of these things is a part of the program. If you don't have this reserve, then they want another 15% kept somewhere every year. And obviously, we, we don't want to just keep growing a reserve. So this is a very helpful tool. And again, this has allowed us to reduce it back so that there's no increase. And then the next two pages are kind of a summary of the, the capital improvement plan, you know, between what's planning for the rest of this year, as well as you can see, obviously, for the next five years, a different categories, a general fund, what's been put into Pelican Preserve. And then from there, you can see, you know, Stony Brook, Enterprise, you know, all of them have their own piece. And then again, that's where, when the project has to be decided, who's paying for it, who's benefiting from it. This is the, these are the two slides that kind of dictate that. And then the last one is your reserve balances. And again, we've, we added this last year, and it's obviously a great slide. It kind of covers you through what's been audited for you. And I say that meaning that these numbers do not include any surpluses that you might have as of right now. And if you, you know, we, when we talked about, if you remember, when we talked about the last set of financials, you know, the general fund was doing well, you know, compared to budget. Pelican Preserve was doing very, very well. Those numbers are not in here, per se, because I can't assume that they will spend in that way for the rest of the year. But this gives you kind of a general idea and a reference page. And that, those are all the slides for you.
I'll start with Bob. Bob, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Ed?
No.
Carol?
Yeah, Ed brought to our attention that in the-
the last version of the budget that we saw, that in Pelican preserves funds outside the gate, that there were, in his opinion, no administrative expenses that were included in there. Do, am I correctly stating what you said at the last meeting?
No, it's in there, but it's not at the same distribution methodology used for what appears to be inside.
Okay. Why not?
That actually was a question that was asked of of Russ. Those particular type of things, Russ handles with the methodology, the inside, outside. And we'd have to kind of ask him, I I thought that question was already asked of him and he provided a chart that showed that.
Okay. I thought the question was linked with the budget, so I waited until the budget to ask it.
What our problem is, is that we don't see the math to show how those were calculated. That's the problem. In other words, how, for example, Platted Wind Dixie, 71,094.67 out of 3 million, whatever the number is there at the bottom, 3.4 million, something like that.
Four million.
What's the basis of that? I know in Gateway, we have a defined breakdown for admin slash park and rec roads and water management. There's formulas. Those are based on trip generation, whatever. I have no idea in Pelican how that's done, no idea.
Can outside gateway?
Russ told me that the vast majority of it is trip generation for the commercials, for the commercial aspects. And all of the monies that are assessed here and shown here all go into the OT fund of Pelican. I don't know if that helps you or hurts you, but.
He doesn't give you, he doesn't give you the answer that you want, what, why is it a difference? And I guess being able to calculate that.
From my understanding with this, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but it's all determined by the benefit. And so Russ has determined in his assessment methodology that there's a different benefit for those outside the gate compared to inside the gate. Now, how that's calculated, I don't know.
Well, maybe we will find out in the next coming months.
Yeah.
When we start digging into the formula.
Because an awful lot of people use that as other, the Pelican people, I mean, there's a whole ramp to communities that drive their vehicles to Wind Dixie, for instance.
Well, copy, a copy of the calculation will tell you everything. Will tell you everything. I can understand the use of trip generation or doing costs that would be of an administrative nature, since you don't have anything else.
Well, you also have water.
But that doesn't have anything to do with water. Water is a separate issue.
Yeah, because of, there's a lot of it's, you know, all.
Concrete, concrete.
So there's a heavy burden there also. Because it's building and parking.
Yeah.
And then my other, my other question was going to be about line 43, the WCI Platted Residential C5. My understanding that that is, one owner owns the entire thing of C5 and it's the townhouses or condos or whatever you want to call them are rented out. How is, does that differ from the condos that would be inside of Pelican Preserve? Is it because there's one owner?
We, the district, still handles their water.
Let Steven answer the question.
Give you, one before Russ. Give, give you a rule, there's 168 units. So if you divide 168 units into 173,000, you've got a little bit over 1,000 per unit. It's one way to look at it. It's 168 units.
It's, it's based off of the DOR code that's on the property appraisers website.
What's DOR?
Department of Revenue.
That's correct.
So it, how the property appraiser deems those, those DOR codes, so you'd have to look at a condo inside of Pelican and then look and see how how C5 is coded. That's how, that's how he determines.
Okay, and so Steven, you're saying that goes back to the methodology again, it does not?
Yeah, it it, that's, yeah, it goes back to, as Chelsea says, there's codes established through the property appraiser that Russ has to follow, along with the methodology that he has established, that's been, he's established, that's been approved. And that's how those numbers, you know, are set up. And then the same thing with the inside and outside, how that's also set up through the methodology. The one point I'll make, and and we've talked about this already with Russ a little bit, and I think he's got a natural way to to do this now with what's upcoming is, is we've asked him to take a look at his workbook and to really kind of set that up so that, I won't say the average person, but let's just say, that, you know, it it's a lot that goes into his calculations and the number of tabs and stuff. And we'd like to be able to have more, a better way to provide those to the board and to the residents. So we've asked him kind of take a look at that and maybe redesign it for us. So that there's, you know, like when we did Arborwood, we had to send that back to him to get those Arborwood parcels adjusted, because if we had touched it, we don't know what we would have, you know, hurt by doing that. So a lot of those calculations that Ed's talking about, they're built in there, they're there. But there isn't a a clean way to say, here's a nice chart. Here, let me show you this, because there, it's tabs building on top of tabs within a a great big Excel workbook.
Stormwater is the biggest part.
So the so basically you get a formula of some sort or a program of some sort?
No.
Plug in the numbers and that's what comes out?
It's actually the opposite. When we build the budget, and it's a great question. When we build the budget, meaning staff, myself, whoever's involved, we actually get the 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 total numbers and then turn those over to Russ. And then from there, Russ, as the consultant, he builds the role and then turns that back over to us to review and then, you know, turn in. So he really is a driver on that particular part of this process.
Okay. Well, I guess we will have lots to talk to Russ about in the next coming months.
We will.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
No, continue.
Do you want to, if you have any edits or comments or questions about the budget?
I have some requests from Stony Brook to make some changes and I am comfortable making these changes based on their their current year usage. Let me find their tab here. They sent in a request and I agreed to, my, I'm going to recommend, tell you what they, what they've requested and then what my recommendation is going to be. It's not in this version here. It's, so the first change is here, let me blow this up a little bit. All right. Here, first change is right here, with the electricity for the street lighting. They've asked for that to go down to $43,000. I am comfortable making that change based on their their usage year-to-date, so my recommendation would be to change it to $43,000. The second change, which they didn't actually make a change, was this number, this number, there was no change. So you want to change that, Steven, or do you want me to change it this?
I have a question before we change it. So is it, is it averaging 43,000 because we have nine to 11 poles that aren't working or it has nothing to do with that?
They're considerably under that amount, so even lowering it to 43 is still going to give them a cushion. Yes, that's why I'm comfortable taking it down to that. Yep. Are you taking care of the changes, Steven, or do you want me to do that?
What's ever more comfortable for you, if you want me to do it, you're seeing it on the screen as well.
I'll talk and you can type. So that'll be 43,000.
43,000, okay.
All right, and then we're going to go down to this. Where am I going here? Forty, where's the O and M? Here, right here. This one here, they've requested to take that down to 40,000. I countered with 45,000 based on the fact that right now with two full months left in and I'm missing some reimbursements, we're already sitting at 30,000. And we don't know what's going to happen in 2025, so I countered with 45,000 for that, based on what they've used so far, so I'm, I'm recommending that we take that down to 45,000. And then the last change is down a few lines, oh, they want to change the gatehouse reserves, they would like to drop that to 3,000 from 4,500, the line you're on right there. I guess I'll leave that to the board, because that's a district asset.
I would keep that as it is.
Keep it at 45. And the the last change that they wanted to make was the capital reserves, they wanted to lower that to 1,000.
I would say keep that as it is.
I left mine at nine, yeah. But I said that would, I would bring these changes in front of the board, so.
That's just my opinion.
There was just, there was two that I'm comfortable changing, just based on what they're, what they're using, yeah.
All right, anybody else has any feedback?
That was the only feedback that I received from any of the committees or community, well, actually, Stony Brook's the only community that gives input. But P PAC already made all of their changes to their budget. And then with the adjustment we made with the parcel for the RV park, that did change their budget a little bit, but other than that, there have been no, outside of Arborwood, no other changes to the budget from what you've been looking at for the past two months.
What did this do to Stony Brook's local share number reduction? Or is that what somebody's crunching?
Yeah, yeah, it's over here to the to the right. It drops their number from $496.44 down to $456.59.
That's about 40 bucks.
About 40 bucks, okay.
Just two items.
There were, yep, two items. I dropped the electricity and then the O and M reimbursement.
Those other two are pennies.
Yeah. Other than that, I I don't have any changes to recommend to the budget. Obviously, it's your decision, any other changes you'd like to make, but based on feedback from staff, the committees and Stony Brook, there are no other recommended changes from me.
So you, are you looking for a motion?
Is there official language that we should read, legal language?
Oh, do you want to pull up a resolution? Let me find it here.
Is there wording for a motion?
Yep.
Tony has given you?
It's here.
So that we do it right?
Yeah, but no, I don't think there is.
The one, next one above it, 15A? Or am I B? 15B.
Our next deal is to approve Resolution 2024-22, isn't it?
Yep, that's it right there.
With 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 changes noted?
Yeah, I was going to say, there is no motion. Usually the motion is just to approve the revised version of FY 2025.
Motion, the motion would be, Tony, texting Tony, motion to adopt the budget as amended per the recommendations from staff and Laura, go back through all of those again once the public hearing is closed.
All right, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion and second?
To?
And Laura, to approve the revised budget?
She said, once they, you have to do that, once the public hearing is closed, you got to close the public hearing first.
First, you want to list it again, the two changes?
Says motion to adopt.
No, the changes that we'll propose.
You have to say two changes now again.
The changes, yeah.
Specifically what?
You have to say specifically.
Which changes did I make? Okay, I made. We made the amendment and removed the the assessment to the RV park, the O and M assessment, reallocated that, that is now $0. We changed in the OO4 fund, the street lighting services electricity from 40, $48,000 to $43,000. And then we changed the O and M reimbursement line in the OO4 fund from 71,000 to 45,000.
If there's no more further comment, you should move to close the public hearing and then move to adopt the budget.
Okay.
I moved to close the public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
A motion by Bob, by Carol, a second by Bob. All in favor, say aye.
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 Now, make the motion to adopt Resolution 2024-22, noting the changes that were just announced by Laura. Yep.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
So this is also a public hearing.
Steven going to give us the numbers that go in.
Sorry?
This is also a public hearing, so we'll open this one as well.
Read that second one, there's like, there were three sheets.
Yeah.
Yeah, the certification one?
Yes.
I thought the notice just said there were two.
All right, so it's 638, and I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for determination of the special benefit and imposing the special assessment and certifying an assessment, assessment role for the adopted FY 2025 budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
District manager, do we have all the requirement legal notifications for this hearing in in the record, including a copy of the ad that was in the paper? The F David of posting in the paper, a copy of the mailer and the F David regarding the mailing.
Yes.
Did the staff receive any comments? We already went through that, right?
Well, for on this particular item, no questions.
All right, so the procedure we're going to follow is the staff is going, okay, so we don't need that. We don't need to present anything else.
There's no additional presentation.
The tax rule automatically calculates based on the changes that we made in the budget.
So we just close the hearing again?
If there's no public comment, yes.
So seeing that we have no public comment, I will now close the public hearing and turn to the board, and turn to the board for discussion.
Motion?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
On David?
Aye.
All right.
I need to.
Adopt.
That's what I just did.
No.
What I did.
You close the hearing. That was the, yeah, so here he's closed.
Just do your motion again.
Okay.
Where's Tony?
Motion to approve Resolution 2024-22.
Twenty-three.
I'm sorry, 23, 23, 23. With the changes made.
I'll second that motion.
And I guess just for clarification, there were no changes made on this particular, or is this? It would, the changes, but from the budget would update the assessment. Understood.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion or second?
If you want to just say in the motion.
What are you looking at?
This right here, adopt.
Adopt, I can see it now. Adopt Resolution 2024-23, making determination, determination of special benefit and imposing special assessments and certifying an assessment role for the adopted fiscal year 2025 budget.
And I'll second that motion. I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's it?
That?
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, signatures.